Speak into the.
Speak, you gotta speak into it.
You guys hear me back there?
Uh-uh.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, everyone's looking at me blankly. Can you guys hear me back there?
You bring it closer to you.
Saying no, okay.
Bring it as close as you can for now.
Put it on you, yeah.
Is this good? Yes, now I hear it's, come on, it's gonna pop.
Come on, let's go.
Okay. I want to call to order the September eighteenth regular meeting of the Atherton City Council. Can we, uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Those allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Anthony, can you give us the roll call?
Yes, I can. Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Yeah, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Here.
And I'll note that Councilmember DeGolia is not absent, but when he arrives, I'll announce him.
Okay, so our first item is to introduce Code Officer Elizabeth Dalby. Um, do we have someone to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Commander Larson's gonna do that.
Commander Larson, there he is.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you, man.
So, I am pleased to introduce our newest Code Enforcement Officer, Elizabeth Dalby. Elizabeth was previously employed by the city of Fairfield where she was a Code Enforcement Officer, and later promoted to the position of Police Support Supervisor of the Code Enforcement Unit. While in Fairfield, Elizabeth completed courses to become a Certified Code Enforcement Officer in the state of California. During her tenure in Fairfield, Elizabeth participated heavily in community engagement activities to include presenting a Neighborhood Watch meetings, uh, citizen police academies, shop with a cop, and other outreach events benefiting local youth and community members. Additionally, Elizabeth championed to establish the city's Fire Life Safety Task Force that utilized resources from separate departments to combat complex cases effectively and cohesively. When not at work, Elizabeth enjoys spending time with her daughter Mia, her fiance Tom, and the rest of her extended family and friends, cooking, traveling, attending concerts, shopping, exercising, or taking in a sporting event. Go Niners. Elizabeth has to, has a commitment to public service with an emphasis in community preservation and looks forward to assisting our new department and the residents of Atherton in these pursuits. I will now give Elizabeth the oath of office.
Okay.
So Elizabeth, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Elizabeth Dalby.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
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 Yeah.
Thank you for, uh, joining our force.
This doesn't work.
Anthony, we don't have any sound. Can you hear this?
Yeah, mine works. Online.
Welcome, Elizabeth. I don't know if you heard that, but we're all welcoming you up here. We're glad to have you. The next item is recognition of the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month. The town of Atherton will join the country-state, the county-state and country in honoring Su- Suicide Prevention Month of September. Residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other in preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding words of support, and reaching out to local resources. So you can find resources such as the crisis telephone number at six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero. You can text nine eight eight or visit samateaucrisis.org. Throughout the month of September, as part of the Suicide Prevention Month, there'll be free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and communications campaign. The twenty twenty-four theme is love over loneliness. Ongoing dates are posted and events are posted at smcs-suicideprevention.com. So, all right, let's move on. So I would now like to open the public comment section of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council. Comments for item on the agenda are limited to three minutes. Comments for items not on the agenda are limited to one minute. And given that we have a full room, I want to take one minute to read the rules of decorum, which are no person participating in a public me- meeting shall engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including but not limited to applause, whistling, feet stamping, booing, making any loud or threatening profane, abusive, personal impertinence, or slanderous uttering of comments. No one shall be allowed to disturb, disrupt, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. So that being said, I would like to open public comment. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Not on the agenda.
That's not, anything that's not on the agenda?
Nothing online.
And there's nothing online? Okay, well, that was easy. All right. So do we have, uh, I'm gonna move on to the disclosure of ex parte communications. Do we have any to claim? Go ahead.
I do. Um, I had a meeting with a resident regarding the Atherton Housing Coalition, um, and essentially, uh, what the presentation at the Planning Commission, uh, was.
I had a meeting during my office hours, uh, with, uh, a couple that are one of the property, or next to one of the properties that are on the thing, and I also met with Bob Polito of the Planning Commission to get his review of how, of how he thinks that decision was made.
Uh, Mr. Riddle came into my office hours on Tuesday and we had a chat. Um, uh, within the council, I also had a conversation with, uh, just Rick.
Stacy, anything? Okay. All right. All right, so we have no closed session prior, so we have nothing to report out there. So let's talk about the consent agenda items, one through six.
Departmental reports.
Oh, sorry, I missed one.
Mm-hmm.
The departmental reports. Does anyone on the council wish to have any questions or discussion of anything?
Through the mayor?
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, oh, I thought, okay. I just wanna say that, uh, the departmental reports are just so informative, and I, I hope that everyone get, can take time to read through them because there's so much that, uh, every staff in Atherton is, uh, on the force is doing to help make our community safer and cleaner and, um, things like that. And the, um, Building Department report was a little staggering to me because August to August, uh, of the valuation of the permits, of the building permits, uh, like doubled. Uh, and in this last August, uh, the valuation of the permits just for the month of August was forty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty thousand. So there's more information like that about how many building permits are issued, and I just encourage everyone to, uh, just take a look at some of the information that's in the departmental written reports. They put a lot of effort into creating them and producing them. Thank you so much, uh, City Manager and everyone.
Concur with that. Okay, so let's move to the consent agenda, which is item one through six. Does anybody wish to pull anything off or discuss anything?
So moved.
Okay, so we move to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did, did you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Whitmer seconded the motion.
Second and passes.
And there's no public comment online either.
Okay.
Thank you, Mona.
Yes, I, I would. I'm sorry? Yes, I would like to do that, and I would also like to move that we, I, I'd like to move that we continue the Charter Cities to another meeting. I feel that we have a lot of stuff on this agenda, and there's a roomful of people, and I wanna make sure everyone has a chance to talk. So I would like to move that we take the Charter City discussion and, and push it to a future meeting.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and Bill just reminded me, another thing that might be useful would be to move the two.
The three.
Three, excuse me, item nine through eleven, move that up since those are, um, very short. And again, in, in the attempt to make this meeting a little bit shorter so that everyone can get a chance to talk.
I agree with that. Let's, let's go to, yes.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so.
Item number nine. Number nine.
Okay. Moving so fast, I'm lost here. Okay, item nine, review and approve the response to grand jury report assessing the reporting internal controls in Samatteo County Agencies and School Districts. And do we have a brief report by Robert?
If you would like a brief report, staff can make the brief report. You've read the staff report on the agenda packet, so if the council wants to make the motion to approve their response or make edits to it before doing so, we can go straight to that.
That'd be fine.
You guys wanna do that?
Yeah.
And not read it?
I read it already.
But you do have to ask for public comment before you approve.
Is there any public comment on?
If we don't talk about it, but do we have any public comment?
On item nine.
Nine. Any online, Anthony? No.
None.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item nine as it is written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, sorry, y'all said aye. Review and, uh, item ten, review and approve response to grand jury report restaurant exterior, the negli- the neglected space. So again.
Same thing, there's, uh, there's staff here to make a presentation if the council would like. The only reason we are actually having to respond to this grand jury report is for the wonderful Mademoiselle Colette, uh, over there at the, uh.
The desk here.
Yes.
This, this is about trash outside of.
Yes.
This is, this is a regu- just so everyone knows, it's about trash outside of restaurants. So do I have a motion to?
I, I'd like to move that we approve.
Item number ten. Yes.
Oh, do I have any public comment on item ten? No.
There's none online.
None online.
Mr. Whitmer moved.
And I believe we have a motion, and we have a second by Elizabeth. So all in favor?
Aye.
We're moving back, break next to here.
Who made that motion?
Grand jury's.
It was Mr. Whitmer made the motion, and I seconded it.
Last item here is grand jury response, the state of compost compliance in Samatteo County.
And same thing, Madam Mayor and Council, they have the written report. It's a letter regarding, uh, compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. Staff here to make a presentation if you'd like, take public comment and, uh.
The Trash Committee got together and reviewed that and found the responses, uh, positive and well-represented of what we are.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, that's about how we're reporting on our composting. Is that correct?
Yeah, there were some other questions they had in there.
But in general, that's what it's about. Okay, do I have a? Do I have a motion?
Sure, but we have to do public comment first.
Okay, do I have any public comment on compost compliance in Samatteo County? Any online, Anthony?
None.
No.
I'd like to move that we approve it.
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now to what we all wanna talk about.
Yes, the reasons.
Yep.
Item number seven.
I'd like to open the public hearing for item seven. Consideration of resolution recommending adoption of an initial study and mitigated net- negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring reporting program, and amendments to the Atherton General Plan and introduction of an ordinance with first reading to amend the Atherton Principal Code to the implement the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one Housing Element and Zoning Code updates. So I believe we have a report by Brittany.
Good evening, council members. Brittany Bendix, Town Planner. Uh, we're just pulling up the presentation momentarily. Okay, good evening. Uh, Town Planner Brittany Bendix. Uh, tonight we are looking at the, uh, Housing Element and Zoning Code update package that's before you. Uh, the agenda for my presentation this evening includes an overview of the purpose of this meeting and the background, an overview of the SEQA analysis and process that we've gone through to get here, a summary of the general plan updates that are included in your packet, as well as the zoning code and map amendments, and then some clarity behind the staff recommendations before you tonight.
Can everyone hear her? Is she loud enough on the? Yeah, I, I, do you mind talking a little bit louder?
It's green.
We can turn the volume up on her mic, but I, I can just hear you.
Yeah.
And I see some people saying they can't hear you, so.
Online. Is this one, this one sounds better?
Oh, that's good.
Better.
Yeah.
A lot better, thank you. Want to hear what you have to say.
Three. It's mic three. Mic four was the one that we were having issues with.
Oh, that's great. Oh.
Yeah. All right, hit it.
Anthony is also helping me with my slides, so we can move on. Uh, so our purpose tonight is to introduce documents that are implementing the Housing Element and Zoning Code updates. It's quite a sizable packet, as you are aware. Um, what I've done here is kind of summarize the key components of the packet and then reference the attachments that, uh, belong to those. So first, we have the initial study and mitigated negative declaration that spans attachments three to six. Revisions to the twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one Housing Element as it was adopted in January twenty twenty-three. That, that spans attachments eight and nine. Supporting general plan text amendments that would implement the housing element, that's attachment ten. Supporting municipal code text amendments that also implement the housing element, that's attachment twelve. And then, of course, the zoning map amendment that corresponds to the, the zoning overlays, that's attachment thirteen. Next slide. So I also wanna provide a be- a brief background of the process that's brought us here tonight. As I previously mentioned, the Housing Element as it's currently adopted was adopted on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That was after eighteen months of public meetings. It was the third publicized draft, and it was, uh, it received over a thousand pages of public comment. We submitted that, or the town submitted that to HCD, and on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, we received a letter from HCD that reviewed and provided, uh, comments on that element. That then, because of that timeline, it then triggered a requirement that we adopt zoning code changes by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we're now beyond that additional requirement to adopt zoning code changes at the same time, which is why now we're looking at all of them together. Um, and that also resulted in a combined SEQA approach. Previously, the Housing Element had been categorically exempt from SEQA, but now because it actually includes the rezoning effort and all of the development standards, that's triggered SEQA review. Over the summer, then, we then, I then met with council and prevent, uh, presented, uh, strategy on how to respond to HCD's comments. That included identifying additional multifamily housing sites for that SEQA analysis. It took us until the council meeting on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three to get a stable project description. And as you'll recall, having a stable project description is important because all of that paperwork and documentation that you're looking at now is based on what that project is. So defining the number of sites, setting the density for the analysis of those sites, all then queues up the analysis that then we look at today when we're making decisions. Um, so that enabled the environmental analysis to start, and that really occurs through what's called an initial study, and I'll touch on that a little bit more later. Then throughout fall twenty twenty-three to what should be noted there is spring twenty twenty-four, we had substantial effort in terms of public outreach. There were seven public meetings that included, uh, topics on multifamily design and development standards, an overview of some of the draft Housing Element analysis that we had prepared, um, as well as a generic Housing Element Town Hall Q and A just to address some, some frequent comments and questions that we were hearing since May. Um, and then we also had a joint Planning Commission and City Council series of meetings to kind of focus in on key issues that we wanted your direction on. Finally, in May, on May tenth, twenty twenty-four, we were able to release the initial study and draft negative, negative, uh, mitigated, mitigated negative declaration. Uh, that started a thirty-day public notice period, and really what it did is it analyzed the adopted Housing Element revisions that we saw as necessary to comply with HCD and include those additional sites for rezoning. Next slide. So we're on slide five now. I have about eighteen slides for this presentation. Um, I'm gonna go through the, I'm, I'm effectively summarizing what's in the staff report and providing some assistance on where individuals can vi- can find certain information that they might be more particularly interested in. Um, I think our approach at this point is to take questions at the end, so I just kind of wanna caveat that now as we jump into SEQA. Uh, the SEQA review process, as I mentioned, starts with an initial study uh, that looks at twenty different factors that are components of environmental analysis. And through the, um, that study, it identifies anything that has potentially significant impacts. Um, and in this case, because we're using a mitigated negative declaration, those impacts then must be mitigated. And so the topic areas that we applied mitigation measures are air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gases, noise, transportation and traffic, and tribal cultural resources. All of those mitigation measures then get sensi- synthesized down into what's called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That's at attachment six. It's really kind of a summary version of what's in the initial study or the ISMND because it, I, it, uh, creates kind of a line item of all of the mitigation measures, tells you at what point of the development review process we'd be looking at them, and who's the responsible party in terms of reviewing those. In response to the initial study and mitigated negative declaration that was received, or, uh, published in May, we received five comment letters. We did receive a six from one, uh, one individual who had already previously commented. Uh, staff has provided all of those at attachment five. They raised issues relative to cumulative impacts. Have we considered all potential development relative to the context that we're doing the analysis? General plan consistency, if the general plan says this, is the project consistent with that? Aesthetics, privacy, tree protections, traffic safety, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and flooding. Our response to that addresses all six comment letters that we've received to this point, even the one that was provided outside of the public comment period. Um, and throughout that review, we've only made one very minor revision to the ISMND that was released in May. That's in the project description on page twelve, um, and basically asserts that any SE- that any addition of sites would require further SEQA analysis. Uh, and that gets back to having that firm project description on which the analysis is based. So, a huge component of the information that you are reviewing tonight was actually, is, is, with this exception, the same document that was published in May. So I wanna make that clear. Um, tonight, what's being presented to you is a resolution, uh, to address the SEQA process. Council must approve prior, council must approve the SEQA documentation prior to approving the project, which tonight is the Housing Element and Zoning Code updates. Uh, it also must consider the ISMND relative to any additional comment that we hear, uh, this evening or at any other future hearings before we approve the document. And it must find that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have significant effect on the environment. And then it must also adopt the corresponding MMRP. Next slide. So in the context of the SEQA review, we've heard a lot relative to a project in Menlo Park. It's called the project, or it's called the Park Lane Project, but it's more, probably more familiarly known as the SRI site. This is about sixty-four acres. Um, on the, this is the site plan that I have shown on the screen. Uh, Ravenswood is the street that is at the top of the screen, and the site plan just beyond that are three sites that are, were, that were analyzed in the SEQA document as part of the Atherton RM ten zoning overlay. What I wanted to present to you tonight is just a brief overview of what the SRI project includes and where more, where individuals might be able to find out more information as that project proceeds. So, this project would include up to eight hundred new dwelling units, uh, included a one hundred percent affordable housing development just directly across from the Atherton RM ten sites at the top. Uh, the pro- the proposal also includes roughly one point three million square feet of space that would be dedicated to office, just commercial office, as well as research and development. There is a draft EIR that has been publiced, or publicly released for this project that occurred on June twenty-fourth with the project period, uh, ending on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Similarly to what we've done, we've continually taken public comment and feedback. This is an ongoing project, um, and I would encourage anybody that has concerns specific to this project to reach out to Menlo Park and provide that feedback. It is anticipated to move forward this fall with the Planning Commission and City Council considering the EIR, public comment that was part of the EIR, as well as the entitlements that correspond to the development. Uh, so I've suggested reaching out to Menlo Park for additional information and have linked to their webpage for this particular site, um, on the slide here. Did you wanna acknowledge Councilmember DeGolia?
I'll just note Councilmember DeGolia's arrived. Thank you.
Next slide. So moving into the general plan updates, revisions to the Housing Element, even though it's the full chapter of the Housing Element or the full Housing Element, that's effectively a chapter of the general plan and considered a general plan update. The revisions that you're looking at tonight, the bulk of them, um, have not changed since the Planning Commission reviewed. Uh, but there is one that I wanna bring to your attention, and I did note that in the staff report. The items that were incorporated into the Planning Commission review is a response to all issues raised, uh, raised by HCD in April twenty twenty-three. An update to the site analysis to align with the twenty twenty-three annual progress report that the council reviewed and we submitted to HCD showing how we're tracking with housing development and our arena goals. An update to the constraint analysis that it was, that needed to include, uh, needs assessment for housing and program assessments, an assertion of timelines, measured outcomes, and corrective actions with our housing programs, an identification of when a program specifically responds to an identified issue. I think some of the issues we saw with HCD is we'd have a program, and then we'd kind of half-reference it in the text, and so we just needed to kind of clean up the way that the Housing Element sections were talking to each other. Um, and then we provided an updated community outreach summary. Uh, so the key component that I wanna highlight tonight that hasn't, that wasn't raised at the Planning Commission is. the planning commission is based on feedback that we're rolling informal feedback that we're getting from HCD that requires us to include a mid-cycled check-in for the RM10 overlay sites. And what we have here is some draft language that indicates timing of when we would look at how we're performing relative to the RM10 sites, when we would, how we would determine whether or not our program had been successful, the length of time we would take to evaluate some alternatives, a list of what those alternatives would be, and some objectives for that program moving forward. Next slide. Other revisions to the general plan are really done just to bring in other elements into alignment with the housing element. So this includes adding references to the multifamily overlay and the land use element and the noise element. That's updating the land use map, figure LU1, to even reference the overlay and then removing a land use policy LU 1.4, which limits townwide heights to 34 feet. What we do relative to heights is something that I would recommend retaining in the zoning code. And really, this correction has less to do with changing the height and more to do with being transparent about where development and standards are and what they are. The next point here is relative to the planning commission recommendation. The planning, the planning commission did as part of the housing element review, recommend removal of the Bay Road and Ringwood Avenue sites. As I've indicated in my staff report, staff is recommending that those sites be maintained and we'll get into that a little bit more when we do the development standards. But before the city council is a resolution that would amend the general plan under all of these areas.
Can we ask questions?
I guess. I want to make sure she doesn't lose her train of thought.
We had briefly discussed taking questions at the end.
Okay.
Because I have 10 more slides.
Yeah.
And then we can come back to the slides.
I might forget my question.
Come on, get more slides.
It's really tiny. Well, it's actually very significant because we're talking about the general plan, right? And when I first got on council, before I got on council in 2006, I was on the general plan committee. We had, you know, a standing general plan committee and, you know, in my view, the general plan is kind of like the Bible for how we live and work and build and develop in Atherton. And it's, it seems like we're completely rewriting the general plan, having to do that. I mean, does HCD's demands take over our general plan? I mean, isn't our general plan like, I guess it's not like law. I guess it's maybe something that we're, so I just.
So the ability to have and create a general plan is a right enabled from the state.
I see. And they can take that away or they can modify it for us. Or they can make us modify it.
George is nodding.
The answer seems to be yes. Just to be clear, the answer was yes on that. Go ahead.
Next slide, please.
I just want to support what Elizabeth said about the importance of the general plan and people's attitudes and perspective on the town and the character of the town as it's associated with the general plan. It's something we take really seriously and have to be really careful about changing because while you may be able to fix errors and changes, once you make those changes, they're, they have big meaning. And I think we have to be very careful about that.
Do you guys mind if we stay with letting her finish her presentation and then we'll have plenty of time. I want everyone to have a chance to talk. So go ahead, please.
So the next slide gets into the municipal code updates, which at this point are really limited to just the zoning code chapter, chapter 17. In this proposal, we have revisions that update the land use tables to reflect state law requirements and align with the housing element programs. And then we also have updated land use tables to reflect the multifamily overlay zoning standards. The land use tables really govern what uses are allowed in each zoning district and the process by which you can have that use established, whether it's principally permitted or requires a conditional use permit, for example. They're different than development standards, which are more physically oriented. And so that gets us to the next bullet, which is the addition of multifamily standards for development. And this establishes the two multifamily overlay districts, RM10, which would apply to the R1A, R1B and POS sites, and then RM20 and 40, which applies to PFS sites. The third component, oh, sorry, I'm not glossing over that. My colleague here, Tom Ford, will go over that in more detail, especially as it relates to the planning commission recommendations versus staff recommendations. But to capture all of that, we then also need to update the zoning map to identify multifamily overlay sites and that's included in your packet as well. Next slide. So out of the planning commission hearing, the recommendation of the development standards for the RM10 sites was to apply R1A standards for height, which brought it down from 40 feet for a peaked roof to just straight 34 feet, regardless of whatever your roof form is, a rear yard of 60 feet, which is consistent with the R1A development standards, and a side yard, the side yard requirement as it's listed in R1A, which is a sliding scale based on what your lot width is. They also required a minimum front yard setback of 30 feet. That's different from R1A standards, which is 60 feet. They allowed for an FAR of 0.5, which was similar to what staff had initially proposed, although we had additional 0.05 incentives to try and incentivize below grade parking and habitable attic space. The planning commission really encouraged us to find other ways to do that using FAR. And then finally, they applied a new privacy standard that staff had recommended based on sill height. What that does is if you're on an upper level floor and you have a window that's more of a picture window, not a clear story window, you have to provide some sort of privacy screening on your glazing below a certain sill height. So you can still have that larger window, but there needs to be some obscurity. So staff's recommendation and the way that it changes or is different from the planning commission recommendation really hinges on the treatment for side and rear setbacks. We think that based on the size of lots that we're looking at or the configuration or orientation of them, it would be good to provide greater flexibility. We also think that the R1A standards for side and rear yards are too limiting and would not necessarily provide for a competitive market reunit. And so that's really where we're getting at with what we're proposing on our scaled, scaled approach and then also giving some relief if you're located next to another RM10 property. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Tom Ford, who's going to walk you through some of the design analysis we've done in terms of modeling this.
Wait, can we ask you a question about what you just addressed? The, the issue about a new privacy standard based on sill height, that was a recommendation from the planning commission? And is that, that's what shows on your slide? And what's staff's position regarding that?
Staff recommended to the planning commission and they took our recommendation.
And can you, so that is a recommendation that if there is a second story window, then part of that window needs to be obscured so that it's not infringing on the privacy of next door neighbors? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and your 34-foot height level, that I understand from your previous presentations could involve a third floor dormer window arrangement. Would that sill height issue relate to that also?
Yes.
And would that relate only to multifamily overlay properties? Or would it also relate to R1A and R1B single family residential properties?
It would only relate to development using the RM10 standards.
I'd like to follow up what he said because I'm looking at your page 42 of 44 in the section, but page 1,525 of 1,727. It's.
Wait, what's the number? 1,000?
525.
I haven't gotten that far.
Well, but it talks about all the windows, all window sills for nine sleeping rooms facing an R1 district located on the second floor or higher shall be elevated at a minimum of 54 inches above the floor plate. And there's an illustration. It doesn't talk about if you had a window lower than that, that it would have to be obscured glass. But it does say all privacy windows shall be translucent but not transparent. Reflective glass is prohibited. So I just want clarification on that, please.
Hi, Tom Ford, M Group. I think what you're looking at is the original submittal that we made, our recommendations. And what the original submittal does not include is the recommendation we took to planning commission at their second meeting and they directed us to do that. And I'm going to paraphrase here, but I think it's something along the lines of any part of a window facing an R1 district on second floor or higher below 54 inches shall be translucent but not transparent.
Thank you for that explanation, but I'm very upset now because I'm reading this as if this is, it says, this was 9/18/24, other municipal code modified. And, you know, our whole chapter 17 is in red print practically. So are you saying that some of this stuff has been modified since then?
No, I think what we're realizing is that text did not make it into the new attachment.
Okay. Well, what other text?
That would be the only thing that was added.
That's it.
Outside of the height inside yards and rear yards, which are in there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So during the summer, you know, we had those community meetings and we also had two council study sessions where we talked about these windows, essentially the same with just some modifications. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually additional transparency standards to provide privacy, greater privacy. So those will be added.
Okay.
And then I have a clarifying question. So we said that it doesn't apply to bedrooms. Is that because of like a fire department thing? I know the sill height was related to emergency access, but I'm wondering why the transparent wouldn't apply to bedrooms?
It's because we can't reduce the sill height and have a bedroom window. So we have to provide some sort of obscurity.
I get the sill height, but the transparent material of the glass.
Yes.
Would that apply to bedroom windows?
It would, yes.
Okay.
And that does not impact the health and safety component of it.
Okay.
Yeah, fire department requires.
I get that part. It was the materials of making sure of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want to go? I'm sorry. Sure, go ahead.
So I just want to follow up on something Elizabeth said. Can you clarify is what we're reviewing in this 1,727-page document, what is currently accurate or has it been superseded by something that we don't have?
It is currently accurate with the exception of the glazing standard.
Okay.
And is that standard going to be provided to us at some point?
Yes. I can share it in a moment.
Okay. Tom, do you want to go ahead with your presentation?
Hi, Tom Ford, M Group. So at the July 28th planning commission meeting, they reviewed our proposed zoning amendment and they made a recommendation, as Brittany described, that we instead take a modified R1A approach, particularly to side and rear setbacks. The front setback, they strayed from that and directed it should be 30 feet. At the first planning commission meeting in July, they directed us to take our zoning assumptions and try to put case study development on them. And that the case studies that we look at should be a minimum of 2,000 square foot per dwelling unit. So we went and started looking for that. They also requested that we use as one of the case studies, the Menlo Park development called the Marquee, but I think many people in this part of the peninsula refer to it as Roger Reynolds. It's the site that was redeveloped with two and three-story townhomes. So what you're going to see are some images where we take two different parcels, very different shapes, the Oakwood parcel and one of the Ravenswood parcels. We take the planning commission recommended setbacks, the planning commission recommended height limits and create a zoning envelope. And then we put in those case studies and see how they fit. And they don't fit as easily as they did with our draft zoning standards that we took to the planning commission on July 28th. So if you're ready, I'll look at the next slide. So we're looking at primarily the RM10 overlay outside of the POS sites is looking at these parcels. So as I just said a little bit earlier, obviously the Oakwood is oblong, very different. Well over an acre. It's about an acre and a half, 1.6 acres, I believe. And the other sites, Ravenswood, Bay, Ringwood, are generally or approximately square and approximately one acre each. So at an RM10 assumption, we're looking at approximately 10 dwelling units. For the Oakwood, we're looking at approximately 16. Next. So here's the first example of what I was describing earlier. Here's taking, if you look at the, at the top of the slide, we call it a modified R1A. That means the planning commission recommendation. So they recommended that we take this zoning envelope for the RM10 standards, a 30-foot setback in the front in all cases, a 60-foot rear setback in all cases, and a side setback that is on a sliding scale, if you will. It depends on the width of the parcel. And presently, we're using the same table as is in your R1A code zoning ordinance that predicts what that side setback should be depending on the width of the parcel. So three important parts of this zoning envelope, again, it's really important to not to look at this as a building. It's just the absolute zoning envelope within which any building must fit or series of buildings. There's first number A, the absolute height is 34 feet. It's a maximum height. B is the 22-foot maximum sidewall height. So once you meet the setback, you can go up with a building a maximum of 22 feet. Anything beyond that in height needs to set back as indicated in number C at a one-to-one ratio. So for every foot you go up, you have to step back from that side or rear or front setback an additional foot. So I'm going to show you the first case study that we discussed with the planning commission and how it fits in this particular. and how it fits in this particular zoning envelope.
But can you just explain C again? Because it's a one-for-one setback increase. And that's an increase in the side setback?
Yeah.
And the front and the rear.
Oh, and the front and.
Anything above, um, some people call it a daylight plane, but anything above twenty-one feet or twenty-two feet, excuse me, would have to set back um one foot for every one foot in height, a forty-five degree angle.
So I excuse me for asking this, but I may be missing it. Can you give me the width of the envelope, the building envelope? I mean, or or I can do the math if you give me the width of the entire parcel. You know, I'll subtract the thirty-seven feet.
I don't have that offhand, but maybe you could.
Because, you know, if this is like a little sausage, you know, you know, if it's too.
So so just to follow up to to understand this, does the side setback start at twenty-five feet? And because the height goes from twenty-two to thirty-four, it adds twelve feet, so that's how you get to thirty-seven?
No, I think if you're looking at twenty-five, you're looking at our proposal.
No, I'm looking at twenty-five, I'm, you're saying it in the the setback increases one foot for each additional foot of height above twenty-two feet. And I'm just looking at twenty-two feet and you're going up to a maximum of thirty-four feet. So that's twelve feet. So I'm assuming you've gone up, you you've increased the setback by twelve feet if it's a one-for-one.
Correct, for anything above twenty-two feet.
It forces a a slanted roof.
I understand that, but it you're talking about increasing the side setback by a one-to-one setback increase, is that correct?
At the height.
At a certain height.
And it's not just the side, it's all four sides. It's the front, the rear, they all have that forty-five degree daylight plane imposed above twenty-two feet.
The thirty-seven foot side wall setback is the sliding scale based on the. That's that's how that's created. Then you have the sidewall moving. And then as it goes above that, one-to-one ratio going back, that creates the pitch.
Yeah, so just to say it a different way, Mr. Mr. Rodriguez, is that the what we see here in front of us, the two thirty-seven foot side setbacks is like the minimum setback for this lot with a thirty-four foot height ceiling, uh roof, sidewall, okay, thirty-four foot. Flat, you can go thirty-four feet flat, or you can go, you know, um twenty-two feet and pitched or something like that. But then if you go above that, then it's one-to-one on both sides and the rear, but not the front. The front stays thirty.
No, all four sides have a setback plane of one-to-one.
Got it, okay, so even the front setback.
To clarify, so if you wanted to have a flat roof, it would have to be twenty-two feet high?
Correct, or anything higher needs to make sure it doesn't conflict with that forty-five degree thing.
Narrowing as after twenty.
Okay, and the total width size here was one-twenty-nine, did you say?
It varies. It's an irregular shaped lot, so it's different from the front as it is from the back. And then the back is not a perfect ninety or.
Yeah.
Ninety-degree angle, it's actually at an angle, so it's not easy to give a precise measurement. We would also look at that specifically when a development came in. But generally, the tier that we're using is thirty-seven feet based on what we have in the R one A standards.
Excuse me, I know a lot of people want to ask questions, but we will open it up to the public and you'll have plenty of time. We're trying to stay because we have so many people, I'm trying to stay with the orderly here, the way we're supposed to do it.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the next slide takes that case study from Roger Reynolds and places it in here. And we try to see where does it conflict with that zoning envelope? So you can see on the front three buildings, um, which are approximately fourteen units spread across three units, uh three buildings. There's some places where gables and and dormers and roof roof bridges and things um interfere with that zoning envelope. But most clearly, the rear setback can it can contains a condition that that last building, which we had showed to the Planning Commission earlier using different setbacks, does not fit. So what you're looking at here is taking, just picking up off the Roger Reynolds site, three of their buildings and plopping them down and getting approximately fourteen dwelling units, I believe. So which is less than they're allowed, they're allowed up to sixteen. So um again, uh that's just showing you what a a case study looks like on the Planning Commission recommendation for modified R one A.
Excuse me, and you're basing that on two thousand square foot per unit?
Approximately, the Roger Reynolds uh project, they vary.
Fourteen.
Some of them get his, no, no, they're not that small.
No.
Some of them get his larges close to three thousand square feet. And cut two of them are below market rate. I think it's all detailed in the project, in the staff report.
Yeah.
But they're all um fairly good-sized units. And um the parking is contained within the unit, it's uh it's accessed from at-grade.
Is that true in this example also?
Yeah, these are, these are actually just modeled after Roger Reynolds buildings.
But but there is parking at grade in this design.
Correct.
Okay.
Next.
Where is the driveway on that?
Uh, see where it says front setback?
Yep.
Uh, and you can see the curb return a little bit. We envision that that is where you could access this.
So would you go in and then go under, it's not underground, you said it's at ground level. So how do I get to the parking for the number C over there?
Well, that one's not in the envelope, so that's.
Well.
All right, well, even the last one of the ones that are in.
You can kind, right underneath the letter C, you can see the sort of faint outline of a two-car garage door there on the alleyway. But.
How do you drive? I guess I, it this. In in the thirty-seven is going to be a driveway there to take you back there?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And there's enough room there for that?
Yes, I mean, it's tight. And also it um, we, in our draft zoning amendment, we said that no driveway or anything that's not vegetative can be within ten feet of the property line. So this puts the driveway outside, right outside at that ten-foot limit.
But don't you say a minimum of twenty feet width somewhere for a driveway?
It's actually twenty-six according to the fire department. What I was referring to is the closest that the paved edge can get to the property line is ten feet.
I must have missed that, twenty-six.
Um, again, we weren't trying to design Roger Reynolds on this site. We were basically taking it as an example that people in the community have seen. Some of your earlier meetings, you recommended it. And then we just picked up those buildings and said, how could you get it to fit? An architect would clearly have their work cut out for them and figure out where's the trash coming? Where's the trash getting picked up? We've shown that there might be space between these buildings for on uh at-grade guest parking, but there's a lot that can't happen.
Can I just ask a quick question? In the illustration, there's light blue and then there's dark blue. And the dark blue is outside of the height and uh setback limits, right?
Correct, the dark blue is where.
See where it doesn't fit.
Yes, correct. Dark blue is where it emerges out of the zoning envelope.
Got it.
So it's too tall.
Too tall, too wide, too.
Well, I think.
Here and there.
Things like dormers and gables, an architect can solve. The problem with the building in the rear, no architect can solve that. That's clearly not developable land if you were to go with the sixty-foot rear setback. So again, like I said, two very different types of shaped parcels that we're looking at here. So let's look at the next one. We took uh one of the Ravenswoods, I believe it's one-eight-five Ravenswood. And you can see the modified R one A standards would be sixty-foot rear setback, a fifty-foot side setback on both sides, and the thirty-foot front setback where the Planning Commission directed us to stray from the R one's A standard. So again, just to review, A shows a plane parallel to the ground. That's the absolute maximum height of thirty-four feet. B shows the absolute maximum height of a sidewall when built at the side buck, uh the setback. So that's twenty-two feet. And then C is a slanting plane on all four sides that slopes at a one-to-one rate. So for every foot you go up, you have to be a foot back and the building has to fit in this. So again, it looks like a building, but it's not, it's just the absolute zoning envelope.
Do we allow dormers to pop out of that plane? Because in a current house, you can put a dormer that would pop out of that plane. Can we do that in these or that's not allowed?
That would currently be allowed.
It would be allowed.
Now the standard's direct to allow whatever is permitted under R one A. And so that would be allowed because the R one A standards are allowed to play break that plane.
So all the dormer rules that currently apply would also apply, even though they're not called out? Are they called out? I don't remember them being called out.
They're they're called out in a means that they are directed to the standards specifically in the R one A zoning code. So we're not introducing any sort of new dormer requirements, we're just relating back to R one A.
Have a question. So I I I'm still trying to understand the one-to-one setback increase. Is that an issue from item B, which is your twenty-two-feet sidewall going up toward the center of the building, which I guess you identify as A? Is that what that is? It goes up one foot for each, it, there's one, by you, you saying a setback increase, I I don't exactly think of. I think of the setbacks as the front side and the rear, but this is a different setback issue. This is going from the sidewall toward the peak of the building. Is that right?
I think of it as a setback increase in the sense that at grade, your setback is X. And then that's what your setback is up until a height of twenty-two feet, at which point that setback then increases one foot laterally for every additional one foot you go up. And that creates this forty-five-degree plane.
But it doesn't increase on the ground level, it just increases.
It's just at the upper levels. And the the reason that this happens in land use is because it's a device to force the massing back.
The massing.
If it's easier to conceptualize, you might just think of it as an upper-level setback. Because in a sense, that's all it is.
Just trying to under, so from from item B, which is the sidewall or the front wall, it's the, it's the wall of the building. If it's at twenty-two feet and if A is at thirty-four feet, there's for twelve feet, you can only go up, you, I I I don't, I don't understand it. And and I, believe me, if I can't understand it, there's lots of residents that can't understand it.
Can you show the side picture?
We can't understand it, then it's not getting clearly explained, or maybe I'm just too dense to understand.
You have that side picture that shows the slant.
Yeah, I mean, this is actually modeled.
But I don't understand.
Council members, this is, this is, um, this is how the R one A standards currently work.
Yeah.
The the angle is different, it's actually steeper, it's forty-five degrees. In R one A, it is one to five. So it's, it steps backs more dramatically.
Yeah.
So for every one foot in height you go up, you have to step back five feet.
For R one A.
I see.
So an another maybe way to visualize this is if you were going to do a building setback thirty feet from the front property line, at most that height can be twenty-two feet. But if you want architecturally a three, a thirty-four-foot tall building, you would have to go back the additional twelve feet. So you are at forty-two feet now to get that thirty-four-foot tall wall.
So your slope has to be.
Or if you want a box, you have to step back further away from this setback.
Ground.
Yeah, so you you have three options. You can have boxes that step, we refer to that as like a wedding cake-type building. Uh, you can go up and then slope and whatever your pitch roof form is has to be within that slope. Or you can set back at the ground level and then go up taller and have more A of A defined taller massing when you're talking about the architectural aesthetic.
Should I carry on?
Sure.
Okay. So the case study we used on this, there's a a photograph of it in your staff report. Um, next slide. It's um a project in Pasadena where they took ten units and designed it into what looks like from the street, two very big bungalows. And actually not that large, if you look at that photo in your staff report, it's pretty um attractive. There's some pine trees about where B is that actually inhibit the underground space. But in Pasadena, the entire area under most of build, these two buildings is an underground garage. So this case study, you can kind of see the driveway sneaking in on the upper side of the parcel. And it wraps around the the far building and then goes underground at the back of the parcel. So in this case, some of these um dwelling units are thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five hundred square feet each, the dwelling unit. The average is closer to twenty-two, twenty-two hundred. But no, in no case is there anything less than, um, I believe, nineteen, one thousand nine hundred square feet. So they're all large units as the Planning Commission directed us, um, underground parking. And as you can clearly see, with the R one A um standards, um, this does not fit within the setback requirements um for this particular parcel. Next. I believe that's all the images I have to show how those case studies would fit uh with the R one A recommendations.
So back to me. I do have some additional uh recommendations that I wanted to include in the code update. Um, and they address some of the questions that I've heard come up in the last few days. First is what is the appropriate size of a basement or below-grade parking? When we left the Planning Commission meeting, they were interested in incentivizing um in whatever ways we could through FAR to allow for basements to accommodate below-grade parking. Currently, the standards require that a basement uh generally aligns with the footprint of the building itself. There is some kind of light exceptions, but it's not really substantial. Um, at this point, I would not recommend, or I would like some feedback from the council on what you think about that in terms of the the full extent of how big that underground development should be. I'm hesitant to recommend any sort of uh extent beyond the maximum buildable area because then you start getting into setbacks, it starts impacting the town's heritage tree ordinance. Trees are allowed to be removed, um, except for oaks when they are within the buildable area. So there's already built-in flexibility for that. What I'm trying to find is kind of the sweet spot where not all trees then are just automatically removed because they're in the buildable area, but they still provide that extra incentive for below-grade parking.
I have a question.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
You were showing us a minute ago a situation where you have two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a space in between. So in in the case you're talking about, the, when you go in that back thing and you go under, that means that the place that's in between will have garage underneath, but not a building on top. And it stills within the building envelope because envelope is the entire whole thing, not just underneath the building. So in that case, it would be, there's, there's underground parking below where there isn't a building on the top. You follow what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So in that case, when you say the envelope, you're talking about the whole square, not just the building.
Correct.
Buildable envelope. Yeah.
But if someone built a smaller house, they could put a garage, they wouldn't. But let's say they build a smaller house, they could make a really big garage that would cover the whole square that's buildable, but then the house could be little house on the top.
Right, that's kind of what we thought, that's kind, yeah, what, you know, several years ago, there, we did not have that limitation. We did not have that buildable area. We did not have that buildable area underground limitation. Some, uh, residents and builders took advantage of it and went lot line to lot line.
Underground.
Underground. And it was a mess. This is before your time, George.
Well, I know, I just, I just want to clarify before you start going into comments and feedback.
Right.
We, we're at questions only. We take public comments.
No, you're correct. You're correct. Sorry.
I have an underground parking question. Are there limits to depth? Like if someone wanted to do like three layers of underground parking, is there like, is there a limit on the bottom for? Um, that more like seismic constraints or?
Yeah. At some level, the excavation that would be required for that would, I mean, any excavation is going to require a geotechnical report. And based on what comes out of the geotechnical report, there are going to be certain construction methods that are not covered by the SEQA analysis. So no, there's not some endless limit in terms of how low you could go.
I don't, I don't think we have an ordinance about it.
So we don't have an ordinance about how many stories down they could go? It's not in here. So is there one proposed or no?
Um, I was not raising stories. We could also address stories. There is nothing currently relative to stories.
Okay.
Um, that's dictated by the geotechnical analysis that's submitted as part of the building permit. Um, what I'm focused on here is the, the, the breadth of the basement.
So I have two questions. Um, I have two questions. One is, why were you reluctant to uh, authorize the basement to go beyond the sidewall of the house, uh, of the prop, of, of the building? That, that's one question. Second question is, you said you want feedback from the council on this issue. Is that something that you'll, you're looking to get now or you're looking to get after public comment?
After public comment.
Okay.
Um, Anthony, can you go back a couple of slides to, um, the other direction? Um, all right, we can use this one. Actually, let's go back another one. Sorry. This isn't the best. So this is our theoretical building envelope. When I, so current standards, uh, allow you to do the basement effectively directly underneath the building.
Oh, and, and if, if, and if the building
Building itself.
Doesn't cover the whole building envelope, the basement couldn't cover the whole building envelope. It just has to be under the building.
Exactly. And so what I am, what I am suggesting as a limitation for you in terms of how far you would consider allowing a basement, I don't think that it should go beyond the maximum buildable envelope or allowable buildable envelope. And my concerns for that, um, is because then we get into having to update the heritage tree, heritage tree ordinance, um, which, which is protected in that area. Um, I also think that the construction methodology to do that level of excavation becomes problematic. Um, one of the things I'm learning, uh, what I, and I've learned in this discussion is that the, the construction approach for basements in the town has been to have a sloped dig to accommodate the basements. So if they're right on that buildable area, they start then encroaching into the setback area, uh, which then risks more and more trees. And that's something that our arborist is currently struggling with because I have gotten feedback from her on this. So I would also, you know, consider that if we were right up against that buildable area line, we should start thinking about requiring that people shore that for excavation and not let that sloped dig approach.
I agree.
Um, can you move forward to the additional? Um, that last slide I was on, this one. So the second issue, oh, one, back one more. The second question is, can an RM ten development use reduced side or rear setback standards? If the neighbor is in an RM ten overlay, but still a single family home? Um, this one I think is important to clarify. It's not currently in the draft standards. Um, as I, as Tom and I have both mentioned, one of the reasons that we're deferring or we're deviating from planning commission's recommendation is because we're seeking more flexibility on the side and rear standards. Part of, one part of that is using that tiered approach, but then the other part of that is giving more flexibility if you're next to another RM ten property. So this come, this raises the issue of, well, what if that next door RM ten neighbor is still a single family home? We want to add language that says you cannot, um, use those reduced standards unless that neighboring RM ten property has an active development application for multifamily on it or has already developed as multifamily. So that's a piece of clarity that we want to put in there. The third one, when can a property with the RM ten overlay use the RM ten standards? So now you're a single family homeowner, you just got, you just got this overlay placed onto your property. Can you do an addition that takes advantage of the FAR and the side setbacks? The rear yard setbacks, the front setbacks? Um, the draft standards don't address this. And so what we want to do is put in a threshold that says that you can only use the RM ten standards if you're proposing, uh, if your proposal results in five dwelling units. And the reason that we're going with five is because you can get four through an SB nine development. You can get uh, roughly four through ADUs. Uh, so once you hit five, you start having allowances to go beyond programs that the town already has. Five is also a threshold that we see in inclusionary housing programs, which we'll eventually get to with the town as a discussion point. And five is also the standard for being, um, eligible for a density bonus program. So five seems like a good number. That's what we're, we're putting in here at this point. Um, the last issue is this question of whether or not a ministerial project means that they don't require any review by the planning commission, um, moves forward with an RM ten development, uh, and doesn't require a VMT analysis because state law does provide for some exceptions. We've heard a lot from the public relative to this issue. And so we want to make sure that if development occurs, they actually, uh, need to provide some sort of documentation relative to how they're performing on VMT and whether or not they're subjective to, uh, VMT standards.
Can you say what VMT is?
Vehicle miles traveled.
Okay, right. But how does that, how does that relate to development here?
What is a VMT analysis?
Vehicle miles traveled.
No, I know what VMT stands for.
So vehicle, a vehicle mile, uh, VMT analysis, VMT, uh, would address how many trips are being generated from the development of a property. And then that indicates how that contributes to local traffic conditions and identifies, um, standards by which you would have to reduce your trips. And that could be through direct onsite improvements or it could be contributing to programs in the city, county or, uh, city of Menlo Park, the county or the town itself to address traffic and safety concerns.
That means?
So are you saying that if, if you build a, a new project that is ministerially approved, so does that mean it's a builder's remedy? Cause these are, any project that's in this, this, this zone, then you're going to have to do the analysis or you're not?
You have to provide the analysis at the point of application. And so we would then review to ensure that it's, it's within the thresholds and it's mitigating any, uh,
Is that the only element of a SEQA that they have to do is the, the traffic? Or are they required to do the, the whole SEQA again?
No, they, well, if they are consistent with what was evaluated under the initial study, they would not require SEQA.
Cause this was in the SEQA analysis.
Exactly. And so effectively what we're doing here is taking the mitigation measure, which would apply and ensuring that if there is any ability for an exemption from that applicability, it still gets applied.
So what you're saying here, if I understand it, is that you're saying, why don't, if you're going to have to do mitigation measures, why don't we identify what they are actually in our proposal? So that if you build something, you have to contribute to a street light or a street sign or something like that? Is that what you're talking about?
They're already in here, the mitigation.
Yeah, the mitigation.
So what, what, what's being proposed is if it's a ministerial project, means it, it doesn't get planning commission review. It's stamped, approved, it meets all the standards. Unless we have some objective standard written into the code, we can't make them do it. So what staff's suggesting is incorporate into the development standards mitigation measures that address VMTs.
And are those based on how big the development is or are they just blanket ones?
Number of cars that are going to be there.
Uh, it would just be a blanket requirement and then the actual, um, response to how they comply would be based on the scale of development, right? So if three adjoining sites all came in as one project, that would have different requirements under this review than just one site on its own. Especially if that one site was only doing five units versus three adjoining lots all proposing a collective thirty unit project.
And so you're proposing we add that to?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree. Oh.
Well, comments can be saved later. Um, so that concludes the updates that I wanted to address. In addition, I also have that transparency language that I can share, um, and put under the umbrella of this. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Yeah. Yeah. It's going to take a second. Okay. Forgive me for not going into full presentation mode. This was just quicker. Um, here it was adding, uh, another standard in section eight under facade design. Um, any window facing in R one district located on the second floor or higher shall be translucent, but not transparent for any part of the window glass less than fifty-four inches above the finished floor. And we did provide a graphic to the planning commission on that. I'll switch over to that here.
This is what we looked at before.
This kind of shows the objective of that where you have this piece of the window is clearly taller than the fifty-four minimum sill height. And so that obscurity would then limit the view.
And you're showing this because this is the only added design criteria that, than what we represented?
And this was at our recommendation, you know, apologies for, for missing that. We're clearly focused on the massing. So that concludes my presentation, although I did want to turn it over to our city attorney, Mona Ibrahimee.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, from time to time, I am asked what happens if the town council does not adopt the housing element? Um, I know that we received a number of written comments in the past few days, um, requesting that this item be postponed or delayed. And I just wanted to give a little bit of context. Um, staff has met with the, um, Department of Housing Community Development. HCD is, is what we typically refer to. And they have advised us that if we, they gave us an initial warning and advised us that if we do not stay within this new stated timeline, given the fact that we are about two years post the deadline, that we will be found in violation of our requirements. So what will that actually mean? Um, number one, non-compliance results in an ineligibility or delay of the town in receiving state funds. Um, those can range from, you know, local housing trust fund program, infill infrastructure grant program. Probably the most critical for this, um, jurisdiction would be SB one Caltrans grants, which would help, um, our streets. Um, from the gas tax. The other aspect is that the attorney general's office can sue the town and demand court imposed penalties. Um, in the past year, HCD and the attorney general's office have been given greater funds through the governor's office to do exactly that. I am not aware of a single jurisdiction that has prevailed. Um, basically they have all settled and paid significant sums of money, agreed to adopt um, housing element that they didn't necessarily agree with initially. And most recently, for example, in this, um, in some examples that we've seen, they have active monitoring of all of their land use approval. The penalties for non-compliance, um, range from a, a minimum of ten thousand dollars per month, that they can go up to a hundred thousand dollars a month. If we still don't comply after three months, then they're, um, tripled. And if we don't comply after six months, they're increased by a factor of six. We can also, um, lose our local land use support authority and, and that would be replaced by a court appointed agent who then makes land use decisions on the town's behalf. And of course, we will continue to, to be exposed to builder's remedy applications, um, which we are presently within, just given the fact that we do not have a conforming housing element. So I did just want to, um, underscore the importance of timing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Have there been cases? Oh, go ahead.
Ha, has, I mean, that, that's true with every jurisdiction in California, that, that, those threats that you just communicated apply to every jurisdiction. And there's certainly jurisdictions that, uh, are further out from us, I think by up to a couple of years. Um, have, has that applied to any of those? Has the state taken over the land use, uh, for any of those jurisdictions?
Well, I'll give a recent example in which there was a, a press release from the governor's office and the AG's office, I think two weeks ago. Um, it had to do with, um, not necessarily a housing element, but it's the most recent example. The city of Elk Grove, um, was alleged to have denied, uh, an affordable housing project. And the AG's office immediately sued. And long story short, they entered into a settlement agreement. The city had to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but the most critical piece, and to answer your question, their applications now have to be submitted to HCD for review so that HCD monitors and ensures that they are complying with, um, Housing Accountability Act. So we are seeing more and more, um, active involvement in land use decisions.
Aren't there also, uh, uh, there's a five-year, a five-year period of time when they also get reviewed. Is that not correct?
For them, yes. And, and the other piece to this is, um, again, I am not aware of a single city that has moved forward to the completion of litigation. All of the cities that I have been made aware of have settled in advance. And because they have settled, they have agreed to, um, a number of deal terms that, um, HCD and the AG's office have demanded.
I have a question for Mona. For the Elk Grove decision, if I remember correctly, wasn't there a provision that if you denied an application for a site, you had to find two replacement sites?
Yeah.
For every single one that you said no to, or am I, did I misremember that?
Thank you, right.
Well, I thi, I believe that was right, but again, that, that is to somewhat signify and underscore that once a jurisdiction is sued, they will necessarily agree to terms that exceed what even the law says because they're trying to settle the lawsuit. So, um, that is the concern with not meeting deadlines and actually getting the notice of violation and having a lawsuit. and having a lawsuit from the state against the town is that, I mean, my real concern is that as much as there may be comments against the housing element, we may end up with a housing element that is far worse than anyone would have otherwise wanted.
I have a follow-up question. So Mona and George, the question is, what is our deadline? Because I've, we've all received a lot of requests to postpone any official motions tonight and to hold a special meeting, so at a future date. Can you kind of, is there a timeline that that might be possible?
Certainly. So in talking about that, our deadline from HCD to adopt the housing element, adopt SEQA and submit our notice of determination and send that all to the state for review is October sixteenth meeting.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, so at that point, you've got a, the meeting, that regular council meeting. So there's been a request to have a special meeting in between. That meeting end now. And so the possibility is at the conclusion of this meeting, that the council could continue this public hearing to a date certain. And the suggestion is the October second study session to have another meeting for a couple hours on the item and have some more discussion. And then conclude it at the October sixteenth meeting, hopefully with adoption and submission to the state.
Okay, follow-up. How would the residents be notified of that if we decided to do that?
Since there's not enough time to do a full public town noticing, it would be social media, the town's website, anyone listening to this recording this evening when the council makes the motion, and the standard Brown Act noticing for the meeting.
So the difference is, you'd said if we created a second special meeting, then the problem was the dates for the public and for getting the word out to people. So can you explain that? So the October seventh date that you were mentioning?
Sure, if you're looking to have the full ten-day advance, public noticing in the newspaper, townwide mailing, all those sort of things, the soonest you could get that meeting to align would be October seventh or October eighth. I know that there is a council member who's going to be out of town that particular week. And that also makes it very challenging for staff to take in all of that feedback, turn it all around, do the analysis, write the staff report and have everything back out to the public for the meeting on the sixteenth, because that has to go out by the tenth.
So the, go ahead.
But, so if we had a special townwide meeting on October second, you, what you wouldn't have time to do is send out a mailer, a physical snail mail mailer to all the residents, like we have done on some other of these housing element items. But you would have time to put a notice in the newspaper, as well as do social media, send out the email blasts that we normally do.
We would do those things, but they wouldn't be the same as the legally required notices that we do for public hearings.
So because it's a continuation of this meeting, so that's, that's, so this meeting is just continuing.
Did you do a postcard mailer for this meeting?
We did.
To everyone in the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
Plus five hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the way we can do it is to continue this meeting as opposed to proposing a whole other new one? Because if we propose a second meeting, then we have to go through all that process. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Essentially, yes.
From a legal perspective, so we do have to do ten-day public hearing notices for these actions, which we have done for this meeting. However, if we continue this meeting to a date and time certain before the meeting ends, we don't have to reissue another ten-day public hearing notice. We just have to comply with the Brown Act, and that will completely satisfy our legal noticing obligations.
Okay, but we could, we would have time if we do another meeting on October second to give a ten-day notice, right? I mean, where's?
No, not practically.
Not the legally required one with the public noticing and the postcard and all of that sort of stuff.
Because of the logistics around putting all that together. But we certainly have more than ten days between now and October second.
Yes, so we would do social media, be on the website, we'd do Instagram, we do all that sort of stuff. And we'd also ask the almanac to help us notify the community about that meeting.
The question is.
And given the breadth of public comments the council received about continuing the meeting, I think there is constructive notice that we're talking about this issue this evening. So hopefully people will tune in.
Yeah, for me, the advantage of being able to continue it is getting everyone a chance to talk and to understand it a little bit better. So that would be, we'd continue this evening till like nine and then continue it. It's on the table, has a choice for us.
Well, let's see where we.
It's on the table now.
It could be on the table if we could choose to do that tonight at the end of this meeting.
At the, at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting.
How far we go.
Yeah.
If everybody has a chance to talk and we can stay later, we need to, but let's do what we can do to get this done. As opposed to continue it.
So I guess I am gonna.
I, well, are we into comments? Because I'd like.
We're not into comments, we're into questions now. So now we have council member questions, then we'll take public comment.
Is staff done with the presentation?
Yeah.
I'll ask the question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Brittany, I think there was some other pieces of information in here where you wanted our feedback on. We, are we gonna get to that later, or what? Some questions were like sliding scale. What other question was, you know, when we do our review of our, how far we've gotten, you know, in 2025, how many things do we have to have done? And whether the, what are the remediations that are required if in fact we don't have those done? And, and my understanding is you wanted that information, but are we just gonna get to that later? Or is that what we're gonna do, or what?
So what I, what I've done is I've summarized the staff report. If you have any questions on the staff report, including those items, you can raise those to me now. Then we would pivot to public comment, and then we could get into discussing and providing comments on those issues that I've raised in the staff report.
So will you pull each single one out? Because I think right now, we're not gonna be able to remember to comment on all the different items that you're on your list.
Sure.
So you're saying right now, you're getting our, our general questions. We'll collect public comments. And then you're gonna walk through each of the things that you want an answer from us. And you'll have a visual cue, so remember what it is. And is that the structure that would work for you?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any general questions on the staff report? I do have one. One of the things I noticed is that there are, the design standards are all in there as a change. The only one we're discussing is this window sill one. So am I to assume that all the design standards that are in there have been through all the different meeting processes already? Bill?
Yes, so those were included in the planning commission packet in July and in August. The planning commission opted not to focus on that. They focused more on the privacy standards and the buildable massing. There was some discussion on whether or not they should pivot and focus on that. But then it didn't have any traction when they came time to make a motion.
Does that mean they just didn't have enough time to talk about it? Or does, are we to assume that all of the things that are in our design criteria, everything from sidewalks, and there's a lot, there's a lot. Are we to assume that the planning commission has given the seal approval for all of those?
Yes.
With the only change is the one with the translucent glass that you were talked about earlier.
Mayor, I have a follow-up. I, you brought up a question that I actually had written down. So where did you get these design criteria? I mean, was it from a design magazine or book, or is it general, or what? Because they're, you know, they're really specific. And the mayor raises a really good point. And if, if the planning commission didn't have time to look at it or focus on it, because they were focused on other setback issues and restrictions and things. But yeah, I would like to have more information, if possible, on the design criteria before we rubber stamp it.
Okay, so.
I mean, and I guess from our community, from our design community, from our residents, from our, you know, builders who are now looking at this. And maybe with the additional time, they might be able to have some.
What was the procedure on the design criteria? Just remind us, so what meetings we had and?
Absolutely. So we did have some introductory meetings on multifamily housing design and development standards last fall.
Yeah.
And then earlier in 2024, I have received standards from other jurisdictions provided to me by residents and developers that they like, that I shared with my colleague here, Tom Ford, who is an urban designer and does this as part of M Group suite of services. We also referred to ABAG's publication of objective design standards, which is kind of an encyclopedia of design standards with an additional cost effectiveness and deterrence analysis, which was really helpful. And so some of these are actually taken from there. But all of them, you know, just because we received standards that somebody liked from La Jolla or the ABAG design standards as a reference, it doesn't mean that we didn't sit here and take into consideration the feedback that we were getting from the design workshops that we were having to try and localize them to Atherton as much as possible. Even with the entry standards that are included in the draft that's before you, there is a very niche focus on how you do multifamily in what frankly, for multifamily development, is considered a very low density scale at ten dwelling units per acre. We get a lot of commentary that this is high density. This is, this is higher density in Atherton, but it's not high density. And so we have to scale some of those design standards to fit something that's, you know, hopefully gonna look more like a single family home than not.
Didn't we also have meetings with public?
Yes, meetings with the public. And the city manager just reminded me that we took the standards to the builders roundtable.
The builders roundtable?
The builders roundtable. And I asked the developers that come there routinely, hey, this is actually where I would appreciate your focus most. I didn't get feedback from some of them, but others were very involved.
So the city of Atherton currently, one of our claims to fame is that we don't have design standards. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is a departure from what we've done historically.
Exactly, and that was some of, I think, the challenge with the planning commissioners is the sense of why are you putting design standards on one type of development in Atherton and not another? Early on in this process, there were murmurs of maybe we should have an architectural review board. And developers and single-family homeowners were not really excited about that and had some concerns about scope creep in that area. So that was abandoned. So yeah, we have this charge, Tom Ford, to write design standards, but he's really been focused more on massing and development standards. And then there's kind of internal battle with the values of the town to let people design their own project. Yeah, Tom would like to add.
So let me just also add one thing. Many of these potential development applications that could come forward, if they apply the right affordability legislation, they don't have any discretionary review. So having no standards is no standards. And so what we're trying to do is at least get a minimum bar, which is why we relied quite heavily on the ABAG document that was just released in April, so that you start to see what a typical building entry should be. And so we dimension out a townhouse entry and apartment building entry and things like that. Again, because at least you now have something, some minimum bar of standards, because it'll, it'll be a ministerial review, and your planning commission won't discuss it.
Do we have density bonus?
We do not, as a town, have an individualized density bonus program. So any sort of density bonus project would have to conform to the state's program. And that's really going to correlate to what we establish as our inclusionary housing program, which is not before you tonight.
So that's, we're gonna see that, but it just hasn't come yet.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, we, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And I'll remind everyone, for topics that are three minutes, we have three minutes. Anthony's gonna monitor it, and I would like anyone who wants to make a public comment to come up to the microphone so people on Zoom can hear you.
I'd also just like to note for the folks that's joining virtually, we plan to take public comment from the people in person first, and then we'll transition to all virtual comments.
Do they need to say their name in their ados, or just their name, or?
It's up to you if you want to share.
Rod Shepard, Walsh Road in Atherton. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilpeople for letting me speak again tonight. I have a couple of questions and then a statement. I think I'd like to make one question for our city attorney. My understanding of the gun that's at our head is that the state attorney general nor the housing department can impose any fines on us. The only body they can is a court. And then that court can only impose fines and penalties if we don't comply within twelve months. Is that not correct?
Mayor, do you want to have all the public comments completed and then staff can respond?
You know what, I, we're all gonna, you can write it down, but do remember to answer him, because I think we want to know the answer. procedurally, we're not supposed to answer when someone makes a question. So Mona, just remember it, and when he's done, I'd like you to answer.
So, and it also sounds like we're not talking about inclusionary housing tonight. That's a different component of the housing element. And so BMR housing isn't a topic for tonight? Is that correct? Okay, because I don't understand how you can complete a housing element without that, but maybe you could explain that to us as well at some point. Okay, so with that, there are so many issues to discuss, but I will limit myself to only one tonight in hopes that the town continues on a thoughtful engagement with its residents. Obviously, these are existential changes to the town of Atherton. We've been very happy with our land planning for a hundred years, and now we're being asked to change it. So we gotta be careful about what we do and how we do it. So I'm encouraging you to take the care and make sure we get it right at this point. The proposed zoning ordinance, ordinance that's before you today has something called the RM twenty forty zone. We never talked about a separate zoning district known as the RM twenty forty zone. What we talked about was including a density in the POS and the, the other zoning district, district, the PFS district. So we, we, we didn't have a separate district proposed, and nobody's ever debated it. It wasn't noticed in the notice, and it's the first I've heard of it. So, so I'd like to come up with a suggestion for you before I'm done on how we might address that. Unfortunately, the zoning ordinance where it does talk about the RM twenty forty has in its language in seventeen dot thirty-seven dot zero one zero, the following quote at the end of the purpose paragraph. And that is, quote, "on additional lots designated by the city council." So where the intent was only to have it on the POS and the PFS zones, this allows it to be applied anywhere throughout the town. And that is something the residents haven't considered, haven't been discussed with. And so it very clearly doesn't limit it only to the POS or the PFS zones. So obviously, we need to have a conversation about this, and everybody needs to have a conversation. The simplest solution that I can propose tonight is for you, us to incorporate the development standards that really define the RM twenty, RM forty zoning district. Take it away from a separate zoning district and insert it into the PFS, POS zoning and just have a standalone different districts. That way, we don't have the possibility in the future of somebody saying, oh, we're gonna do a forty unit development on this particular property, because I've encouraged the council to bend to my will. So with that, you know, it sounds like we're not ready to make a decision today on the ordinances, based on what I've heard. I urge you not to, I don't think you're ready. I think, I think we need to. I urge you not to. I don't think you're ready. I think I think we need to consider it and we need to be thoughtful. At the end of the day, I'm trying to be constructive, but please don't misinterpret my comments. I try to make them in a constructive vein, but I don't support what the state is making us do at this point. I'm just, I think it's inappropriate and it's not at all consistent with what we have been for 100 years. So thank you very much for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You, Rod. We agree with you on that.
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Bill Brownell. I live on Rosewood Drive in Linden and been resident for over 25 years. I'm less involved with this process, so my comments are going to be higher level. I just want to cover three things, and I did put in some written comments as well. The first is to say thank you for the council and staff that this has been a heavy lift, and I think this process has gone pretty smoothly compared to some other towns on the peninsula. So kudos to you for that. Secondly, I think that from what I see, the progress has been made on RSUs and on identifying some big opportunities like Menlo College. I think the process around identifying individual lots has been a little more rocky. That's been a changing list. And right now, part of that list is this concentration of multifamily units on the corner of Ringwood and Bay Road. And that's an area that I drive through a lot. I walk my dog through. And I think that amount of density is just going to create huge traffic problems and public safety problems as well. And if you look at the technical document that was posted for this meeting, that was kind of the conclusion of that document as well in terms of the VMT. You know, it's really high vehicle mileage in that area. They recommended a series of major changes in that intersection, which is part of Menlo Park's jurisdiction, not Atherton. So the remediation measures are sort of out of our control. So I really question, like many other Linwood residents, and particularly those on Frederick Drive, that part of it. And then the other, the final thing I wanted to say is I think there's been a missed opportunity here because I think the approach on these lots has been very scattershot. And I know it's driven partly by what can we do, what can we get done? But I think what's been missing is more of a city planning perspective. Like we want a certain number of units. Where's the best place for those units in the town? And I haven't seen that in the documents. And I think if you look at what other towns on the peninsula have done, they've all come to the same conclusion about where do we want to put the more higher density? And it's in every town so far, it's it's typically around El Camino and Caltrain Transportation Corridor. So if you apply that to Atherton, I think that what that would lead you to to say, we want more density in that same corridor. And that's already zoned for higher density, moderately higher. I think it's the R2 or if I remember the name right. And what's that? Okay, and and so I just urge that in the future, we consider that area, maybe an overlay zone with somewhat higher density than the current zone, which is already higher density than the R1, the rest of Atherton.
I don't think there are density along El Camino.
Wait, what area are you talking about?
Camino.
It's the area near this building and it's zoned R2, not R1. So it's somewhat higher density. So if you just, for example, took the-
Of R2. I think it's R1B is what you were-
R1B, okay, sorry.
R1B, which is still single family.
Yeah.
It's the one third acre instead of the one acre density.
So size you're talking about.
It's the size of the lot. It's not higher density.
Well-
It's just a size of the lot.
It was called moderate density.
Yeah.
But no.
Yeah. But there is more density per square mile than the rest of Atherton.
Only because there's smaller lots.
Exactly, yeah.
Which has its downfall.
We're not supposed to interact. We're supposed to listen.
Yeah.
We just couldn't help ourselves, you know?
Tom Georgie, 425 East Oakwood Boulevard with Stephanie Sargent. We're Redwood City residents and thank you for your time tonight. I'd just like to remind this council that members have stated on the record before now that any multifamily housing would be a maximum of two stories. According to staff, those two stories is somehow a constraint to development is what I've read. And according to HCD, you got to ask yourself how it fits with the fact that at least what planning said in their report is that according to state law, we don't have to have any multifamily sites to actually be in compliance with state law. So we don't have to have any multifamily sites to be in compliance with state law. But if we have a multifamily site, if it's less than two stories, it's constraining development. It's just a crazy contradiction. And it just illustrates how difficult this is for you guys to wade through. It's like impossible. The rolling feedback on the four-year check-in from Mona, it just sounds like pure scaremongering. Southern California way ahead of us with no consequences. When HCD comes back and rejects the plan, please find a way to remove Oakwood. If not, please only allow setbacks at Oakwood that are max 34 high, like your current R1. 60-foot rear side back is sliding scale setbacks at that real narrow lot. Put it at 37. Please don't take staff's recommendation at 25-foot side setback and 25-foot rear setback. That would be the absolute nightmare scenario for me in my backyard. It's it's, I am a NIMBY. It is my backyard. It is. Anyway, yeah, it's personal for me. It's very personal. The recommendation from planning versus a recommendation from staff. You know, ask yourself, what's more affordable, a larger unit or a smaller unit? What's the goal of this? It's affordable housing. If the goal is affordable housing, where are we talking about giving Arada marketable rates? Is the goal to provide affordable housing for Atherton or is it to line Arada's pockets? Because we're really only talking about one property right now. That's all we're talking about. Bay and Ring, those aren't even on the element yet. And this Arada has asked the staff to change the setback to 15 feet. It's incredulous. I'm going to take some time. Thank you. You know, a 40-foot high wall at any of these setbacks, 15, 25, 37, is catastrophically destructive to the quiet, peaceful and private enjoyment of my property. It's clear that you're not going to allow multifamily development on the ECR where it makes sense or any of the other major arteries, even though other people have wanted to do it. But please, for a moment, put yourself in in my shoes and what it would feel like to have your privacy destroyed. If you can, put yourself in our shoes. We're staring down the barrel of a 40-foot high wall. I don't care about any privacy glass. This is the catastrophic destruction of our privacy. Families own this home for 70 years. We should have some rights. And the fact that all your guys' sites are up against a periphery, the optics are horrible about how elitist Atherton is, how it's just get it out of my face and push it out to the side. You know, if you take the standard staff wants you to consider for the sake of marketability, and that's their words, marketability, and couple that with the wrong lot shape at Oakwood and that combination's a plan where one property owner wins and all those surrounding it lose. This dynamic can be mitigated with the right site selection, perhaps sites where the properties are so large that no one would ever know.
Tom, your time is up.
Tom, your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Valentine. I've been in discussion with Diana and that she's the reason I'm here. I'm an Atherton resident. I have a deep background, both financing and developing affordable housing. I started in the late 90s and have financed over 30,000 units of affordable housing. We're developing housing right now in Reno. For us to make a project work, for that project to pencil our land cost in a county that's $100,000 area median income. This county's $186,000 area median income. Washoe County in Reno is $100,000, $100,000 area median income. For us to make our project work, we're buying land at $600,000 an acre. And our average unit size is 875 square feet, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom units. Very nice, very comfortable, very sought after units. When we finish that project, we'll have a line around the block. If you're successful in developing affordable housing in Atherton, you're going to have 500 applicants for every unit. I mean, and one story I just quickly like to tell is when we built our house, I had a very, you know, high quality gentleman, Atherton Building Inspector, Adam Sanders. He was our building inspector. Adam commuted from somewhere near Sacramento to come to Atherton every day. You know, if Adam and his family could have had a three-bedroom, you know, apartment locally here, I think he'd still be working for the town. I talked to him about what he did on his drive. He said he listened to books. I said, what are you listening to now? He said, next year's building code. So I'd just like to say that 10 units an acre is is is, it's not feasible. I can't imagine how with land costs here locally with $186,000 as the area median income, I can't imagine how you make that pencil. I mean, these are rental units, correct? I mean, we're not talking about building units for sale, are we? With to satisfy the state, they have to be rental units.
Either.
Either way.
So I don't, I don't understand how you can possibly make a deal, how it's feasible economically at 10 units an acre. You know, I'll show up at the next meeting and try to come up with some ideas that 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 might help. But right now, my perspective is it's just you're you're doing a great job trying to, you know, comply with a state law that's not fair, in my view, for this town. But I don't know how you, I don't know how you come close at 10, 10 units an acre. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments in the room?
Hi, my name is Jeff Morris. I live on Alena. Thank you tonight for listening to everybody and reading some letters from residents. The amount of time we got to digest 1,727 pages was just unreasonable and unfair. And we appreciate the fact that you're going to consider having a continuation meeting. There's a lot of things I could talk about tonight, but I'm also interested in Bill's last point about this stuff not being affordable. And I'll get to that because it's what's happening to you. And I don't know if you guys even realize what's going on now because this is not affordable housing. What they're doing is creating design standards to let developers make a lot of money. And if you look at table HE 12, we have an obligation to make a lot of affordable housing. The multifamily overlay zone is supposed to have 57, very low, 14 low, 25 moderate. She's talking about a development where I could just really quickly, using my development experience, I can create 100% FAR project using what she's done. So I could build 43,000 square feet on one acre using what she's proposed. This is just a handout for developers. It's not doing anything for affordable housing. And so I think this whole thing needs to be rethought. The housing element's not ready to submit. The zoning changes, the municipal code changes aren't even close to being. I mean, I've spent six hours with Brittany in one-on-one meetings or with two-on-one meetings. I know these, I know that what she's written extremely well. I've spent the time to understand it and it's just not good. And I'm happy to spend time with any one of you one-on-one to explain what's wrong with what's going on here. So we need to take some time. Our attorney tells us that there's absolutely no reason for us to approve municipal code changes or zoning code changes right now. We don't even have an approved housing element. You make the zoning code changes after you have an approved housing element. You could send this housing element to HCD, go through all the zoning changes, and then they could reject it. And you got to go back and do the zoning all over again. You're putting the cart before the horse. And I'm happy to have our attorney talk with Mona because the process here is flawed. It's just not right. And it's not what other cities are doing throughout the state. Our attorney works with cities all over the state, and she told us we're just doing the wrong thing. And so we're, and then in terms of all this building, the building, we never talked about a 133 Enstal Avenue project, which is three stories and doesn't have a 22-foot sidewall. It has a 30-foot front sidewall. It's a three-story building. And it's not what was discussed in any meeting. I only learned about it because I had one-on-one meetings with her. To have a three-story building adjacent to R1A is insanity. The 133 Enstal Avenue is next to Rod's office building, and it's next to the train tracks. And then it steps down to two stories next to the residential in the rear. Okay, the setbacks are wrong, the Florya ratios are wrong. And I could go on and on, and I'm happy to do it in any kind of setting you want.
Hi, John Riddle. You know, I've spoken with most of you and you've all heard my statements before. You've hopefully read my documentation. If you look at the documentation, it'll talk about the general plans and what I think are the most egregious violations of our general plans. Just like to hit the highlights for you. Traffic, can I see photo one, please, Anthony? Traffic has been talked about and it's it's over talked about. On the other hand, when you look at this, this is a photograph. That's the last one. That's number five. There. This is taken from Del Norte down. It is a morning rush hour. It is all the way back to Greenwood Road, which is past the entrance to the park there. If I happened to come back from the airport the other day, it took me eight minutes to get up to Ringwood and Bay from there. The traffic, and there are hundreds of kids traveling on bicycles here. This is creating a safety issue that hazard that is beyond compare and is untenable. I, in my law practice, had unfortunately many, many cases where kids got hit on bicycles, serious injuries, deaths even from resulting from this. Take a situation where we've got people coming out in the morning, trying to get six or eight cars out of the driveway. They can't get through. They're waiting and waiting five minutes. Frustration arises. All of a sudden, they get an opening. Here comes a kid on a bicycle. They may or may not turn left to look. They don't, or they do, and they don't see him. Bam. That is what's happening. I've had enough scenarios where this is the perfect storm, where you're going to get some poor child badly injured as a result of this. You have four homes allegedly that's going to have this occurring. It is just a danger that is preventable at this point by not doing it. These properties were not selected initially, and they should not have been put in there at any time. It is a danger. No, noise. Oh, no. Okay, how about consistent? They're not consistent with the neighborhood. This proposal, what they're going to put in there, okay? This is what is going to be set up on these, generally on these plants.
Could be something different, but it's very much similar to that. She had Pasadena.
These are, these are the 1,700 to 2,000 square foot homes that are on Bay Road. That's what is there. You put those and juxtapose those next to one another. They are not harmonious. They look so out of place. They're awful. The next one, please. The next one shows 999 Ringwood. It's one, one story. That's basically what you have there. They are set back. They, it's a three-foot bush that is covering most of it. And on the right-hand side, there is an ADU that already exists on that property. Okay, all I can tell you is go through and look at noise. Neighborhood privacy is eviscerated. There's no on-street parking, no services, no public transportation, no sidewalks. Zillow even says that these are not walkable area. Look, I'd just ask you to do what is right. The right thing is that these properties should not be included and they should be removed. They can't be safely done and they ruin the entire neighborhood and the character totally against the general principles of Atherton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, they are.
Hi, everyone. My name is Navnit. I'm a resident of the Frederick Avenue. Before I give my comments, I have a very quick question. Is this about the SECA study or both SECA and the planning comments?
Both.
Okay, so I'll first just cover the SECA. So we live in that zone and area, so I can only perhaps comment about that specific, the four properties on the Bay Road and the Ringwood. We, it's, please note that the Bay Road and the Ringwood- Please note that the Bay Road and the Ringwood serves as the key... There are two schools on the Ringwood, Laurel Campus and the Menlo Atherton High School. And all the kids who are in the Bay Road and the Ringwood area and the Lindenwood more or less have to go through, cross that corridor. As per the SECA study itself, if you look at it, it mentions that there are about 41% of the homes have kids in the Lindenwood area. The study doesn't talk about the Bay Road and the other areas, so I can't comment on that. This is about 20% higher, 25% higher than the San Mateo County average, and it's about like, you know, 2X to 3X of the whole of the West Atherton area. So the... On the entirety of the Lindenwood, the Frederick and the James Avenues are the two primary exits. So everyone who has to come out of the Lindenwood, about 1,000 homes, these are the two primary exits they take, especially Frederick, if they want to get to the Willow or the Marsh Road exits in the morning. So SECA study put that... There would be a red light, which can be... The mitigation is that we will put a red light, and there is a comment in there which says that we will turn the current intersections into left-only lanes, straight or turned-right-only lanes. However, both of these roads, the intersections, are two lanes only for both sides. Alongside, there are pedestrian walking pathways and the bike pathways. As John, one of our neighbor, recently just mentioned, that these... Lots of kids go in there for high schools, all the way from 7:45 in the morning till about like nine. And I have two kids. They go to... One go to Laurel Campus, upper, and one go to lower. They both bike on the roads. Quite often, they come and say that, "Hey, I can't even make a right, a left on the Ringwood before the some car honk step." So the drivers in the morning, and they have little to no patience for various, all the reasons that John mentioned. Thank you. And the childrens are already honked at. So that's one of the key issues. And we asked in the SECA study, is there any mitigation for it? And the mitigation was, we will put a red light. What is the plan? The plan cannot be that, hey, we will build a highway, okay? We said like, hey, California, build a railway line between here to San Francisco to LA. What's the further details? None of those details are captured in there. And we are just trying to understand how it can be done safely. That's my primary key concern. Now, the planning commission in the meetings did note that, hey, they are approving the SECA only for one reason. This is actually in their meeting, that they do not have time to do another SECA. Very critical comment, okay? And then the second comment they made is that unanimously decided that these four properties are not just bad planning. They select it is really, really terrible planning. They should not have been included next to the school corridors in the first place. And this is also one of the key reasons why these were never studied or considered in early 2002 and 2003, that we will put multifamily housing zones in here. Yeah, thank you. Now, since we just... I've only covered the SECA thing. I'm going to just cover the actual planning thing, so... If anyone has objection? Okay, objections?
Yeah, I think we've given everybody three minutes, and, you know, we've got a lot to cover. We've got people online, okay? So if you try to stay within what Anthony's asking, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah. The thing is that I've sent comments in writing, but they just get ignored there, like, you know, so... Okay, I'll come back.
Did you send an email? I've got all the emails here that everybody sent.
Yeah, we read your emails.
Also, not supposed to be clapping.
Yeah, we're not supposed to be clapping, George, being reminded here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Martin, and I'm a resident adjoining the Ravenswood Properties under consideration. And I'm pretty confident that most everyone in this room and online would say they'd rather not have a multifamily building built behind or next to or across from their residents. And, you know, I would say the same, but obviously, we're faced with an issue that we need to deal with as a community. And a problem seems to me is that it hasn't really been articulated, maybe to the residents, why these properties were selected, why other ones were initially selected and then removed. And now we see in the last month, some proposals to take some that were added off again. So I suggest that I don't have a whole lot of confidence that there's been like a strategic or it's not obvious to me what the approach has been for identifying appropriate locations for multifamily housing development. And I wish I had the solution for you. That is not my area of expertise. But it certainly feels that way on the receiving side and on the adjoining side. I'm not going to say whether or not I think you should build it on Ravenswood, because we're obviously faced with an issue as a community. But some thought, like a planning approach to what is right to address these issues going forward is what I would suggest. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Kelly for the introduction, because I will follow on what she said. My name is Ken Frederick. I live in Lindenwood. I don't live on Frederick Avenue, but I've always wanted to. And so I'll make some comments about that. Following on what Kelly said, we spent almost two hours talking about objective design standards. Very important, critical to what we're doing. But you know, there's way second tier to her question was, what are the objective location standards? Nobody has a clue as to how those locations are put on there. There's no standard process. There's no, here's the checkmarks. They just show up and like whack-a-mole, they get whacked down, and another one shows up. So quite frankly, on October 2nd, should we have a meeting, I'd like to dedicate it to the objective location standards. Design standards are important, second tier. We must have the... Missed up a discussion on objective location standards, or it's a waste of time. Second of all, with all due respect, you can get a postcard out. You've got two weeks. The police department put out a postcard out for us for the senior meeting in two days. People received it in five days. You've got two weeks. You can get a postcard in people's hands. Spend the money. It's not very much money for the process. So first of all, objective standards for locations is the important thing. My second comment's planning commission. The only real input from residents in this whole process has been from the planning commission. These guys are great. They are incredibly well-experienced, credible knowledge, put in lots of time. They are great. For us to throw out everything they say is a real embarrassment and a slap in the face. If you don't listen to what they say, then why have them? If I were in the planning commission, I'd resign. Lastly, I sent you all guys a note, and it comes to this question brought up by our lawyer, that there's a gun to our head. We've got to keep going, because if we don't keep going, we're going to be in real trouble. I sent you a note, all said that there were... I can think of three examples of people that followed that rule and it turned into disaster. One was the Donner Party. They got news about the weather, and they kept going. Two was General George Armstrong Custer. He thought there were 1,100 Braves, there were 6,000. And three was Edward Smith, the captain of the Titanic. That's not an iceberg, it's just a small floating piece of ice. We have that sitting in front of us. I don't want our council to be the fourth on that group, having gone into disaster with the data they have. So I urge you not to follow their footsteps. Thanks.
No clapping. Yes, please.
I'm a resident of Frederick Avenue. I'm a mom of two kids who go to elementary school. And at the risk of wasting some time, the precious time, I'll share a recent example. A kid, a middle school kid, perhaps, I think a sixth grader, was biking to his school, and a car dragged him along. Parents on the both sides thought the child was dead. The child was in the hospital with broken ribs. As my husband shared, our kids get honked when they go to school. While our primary elementary school is telling us anything but car, make your kids independent, we truly can't. We have to stop traffic in the morning to send our kids already. The five-way stop on the Ringwood and the Bay is already not considered safe. Moms are rallying to make this place safe. In fact, there was a meeting yesterday to how to make our kids safe, because that incident shook all of us. So I really have a question. Who is going to be liable for the safety for this choice? Because we decided these four houses versus a high-traffic area with public transport, the El Camino real, which is what perhaps Sacramento meant when they said, "Find your houses." But we're choosing a very road-blocked... And I would urge you guys to come in the morning during the school drop, during the school pick, and experience it, what parents feel. And then if you feel it's safe enough, then let's go ahead. But if it's not, let's do the right thing. And also, I asked this question, why these houses were not picked in the first way? The city council picked parameters to pick parcels, and then you yourself abandoned them. We would like to know why you abandoned those requirements that you set yourself and picking up places where kids are already not feeling safe to bike to their own schools. Are we going to be rated as a safe city to bike or not? That's a question, perhaps. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth. I also live on Frederick Avenue. I've lived in our house for 12 years. I've had three boys during that time who all attend local public school, two at Laurel and one at Hillview now. All three of my kids bike to school every day, as Priyanka had just said. Like, I get out every morning, and I stop traffic so that we can get out of our driveway to turn left down Frederick. There's a slew of cars coming through. A gentleman earlier had also shown a picture, showed a picture of Bay. The majority of our kids' classmates, and it's a majority, actually, but a large number of our kids' classmates are coming through the five-way intersection already at Ringwood and Bay. So I know there's been conversation about whether the four lots on Bay will be included or not included, and it sounds like at this point, they will not be. But as others have said, I'm only reiterating at this point, things that have been said, but as others have said, I think it does feel very much like a game of whack-a-mole, and I am here today. And it almost feels like every time properties are selected, the surrounding neighbors, everybody's in a NIMBY position, and I totally get it. But I think I would really just love, from a holistic perspective, to look at what are the ideal locations to increase density and where we actually have a plan for how we handle traffic and transport and allowing people to bike safely as well.
Hi, Pamela Riddle. Frederick Avenue also. I just wanted to touch back on this whole notion of the selection process for the properties. And I have some real concerns about really due process issues here, because we were not notified that these were on for a hearing last July. All of a sudden, these properties behind our house and the four along Bay Road were included. Then we went to meetings objecting, and it was included in the SEQA study. We were told, oh, don't worry. This won't make any, you know, bearing. This won't be, you know, made into... We were going to put these through because they're in the SEQA study. Well, that's what I'm hearing that you want to do. You want to do the fast thing so that you can get this off your plate. And you want to choose these properties for zoning overlay because they were included in the SEQA study, so it makes it easy. But they're not the right properties, and they never were, and we never got noticed to object so that they would never be included in the first place. Thank you.
Skip Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Skip Hilton. I'm a 30-year resident of Menlo Park, and I think I may be one of the few people representing Menlo Park in this meeting today. I'm a homeowner in suburban park neighborhood, which is off of Bay Road. I've lived here for 24 years. I'd be with you tonight, but I had knee surgery on Friday, so I'm sitting in a rather uncomfortable brace, but I thought it was important that I chime in with support for what a lot of you've heard from these other folks about the parcels on Bay and Ringwood, why that they're a really bad idea. I did receive the postcard for the meeting, and I appreciate the outreach. I assume, even though I'm not an Atherton resident, that the city council staff, planning commission, and the M group are still interested in my feedback and will take it under consideration when you make your decisions. The neighbors here along Bay Road were landlocked, and this project, specifically those four parcels, will dramatically impact our daily life. I drive it... Well, I'm not driving now, obviously, but I normally drive it at least twice a day. And the picture that was presented is a very accurate example of what is there every morning on the school hours and the commute hours, and it's also busy in the afternoons. It's just already massively impacted. If you know how Bay Road works, most of it backs up to Lindenwood. It's the back fence of Lindenwood Properties, except for those three parcels on Bay and that one on Ringwood. They exit on to Bay Road. They don't even exit into Lindenwood or into Atherton. They exit into Menlo Park. And so the impacts of any traffic is 100% on Menlo Park and 0% on the residents of Lindenwood and Atherton. So it's not super neighborly, this plan. The one thing that the town council may not be aware of is that there is a much larger affordable housing development of 90 units that has already been approved on Sheridan Road by the Menlo Park City Council to achieve our city's housing plan. And almost all of the traffic from this development is likely to also exit through Bay Road during these busy times. I don't believe that the transportation study included this impact in their study. I've heard from, even though the postcard said that these were going to be removed from the plan, I heard from staff that they are recommending to keep them in the plan and to disregard the staff's recommendation. I find it also interesting that staff presented a whole slide on the SRI Parkland Project on Ravenswood, which impacts traffic for three parcels, which have 32 units across there. But we're talking about 36 units down here. And yeah, they had a low VMT, and we had a high VMT for this area. I'm just, I really ask you to listen to your planning commission, listen to the comments that have been presented tonight. I think that they've done the work, they know what they're doing, and there's a reason why they made that recommendation. And you're going to make all of your Menlo Park neighbors a lot happier if you take those four parcels out of the plan. Thank you.
Mary Wheeler. George, you have the floor.
Hi. First, I want to thank the city council for at least trying to listen to how the residents feel. Sometimes I feel that sometimes unelected bureaucrats dictate things that happen and not necessarily the city council. So I appreciate that you're really thinking through this very thoughtfully. One thing I want to say is that... So I live on Rebecca Lane, and so the Ravenswood area is what affects our neighborhood the most. Of course, we would prefer that those lots were not in it. And I think just the idea that because the SRI is having, you know, a higher density, well, then let's go across the street and make that really high density too, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I would love to ask the question, and maybe you can address this later, as to why the El Camino corridor was actually taken out of it. It's, I do feel many of the comments about the whack-a-mole is exactly how I feel that if a group just started to complain, then you took it out. And yet, was that really the best place to put high-density housing? The other thing I just want to say in closing is that this, what the state of California and the elected officials in Sacramento have done to the state of California because of this and to suburbs is really unconscionable. And I would just like to state, it's about time, and this is being very blunt, it's time that we stop voting people who are running the state of California now. We need to stop voting for Democrats. We need to just stop it, because this is what we get. And it's about time that we stand up for things that need to be done differently and that we can actually hold on to what we'd like our neighborhoods to look like. So anyway, thank you for letting me say that.
So you can only talk one time. You can come back at a later time, but in one round of questions, you only get to ask once. I'm sorry. So I would personally like to take a five-minute break, but if everyone else doesn't want to... Is there anyone else wants to take a five-minute break to go to the bathroom? If not, I will turn it over to...
We're going to close public comment.
All right. So we have two of us who are saying, all right, so I'm going to take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we're...
We're closing public comment.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment, and then we're...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a five-minute bio break. Thank you.
Robert rules of order here, okay? You are so bad. You're I'm older than you are.
Your mics are muted until Anthony comes back. Go ahead. There's our.
There are no calories in those donuts.
Are we on? Oh, we're unmuted now. I was saying that there's donuts in the kitchen. Thank you, everybody, for orderly sitting back down. So. So I'd like to turn it over to the council.
Right. At this point, it's.
Yes, but also we what we talked about before the break was that we were going to go through the actual specific questions as well. So why don't we see if we have any comments, general comments? And then Brittany, you want to go through the specific questions you have for us? And we'll go as long as we can and then decide if we.
Okay, through the mayor.
Didn't we promise that Mona was going to respond and?
That's thank you for reminding. Yes, there were a couple of questions that people ask. And I, yeah, we asked Mona to write them down so you can see that we don't forget.
But before that, I mayor, I just, as we've reconvened, can I just say I really, really appreciate all of y'all being here and talking to us. And, you know, we're going to continue. I think we received about 40 emails from yesterday afternoon till today, tonight. So thank you and for coming out at this every now and then. Things rise to everybody's consciousness and then we we get to see you and hear from you. But that's we're really trying to work through this together.
So do we have any comments? Go ahead.
Well, at that.
I thought we were going to answer the questions first.
I have a comment at that level, which is I also want to express my appreciation for everybody coming out. This is a really hard subject. It impacts all of us and it doesn't just impact us now. It impacts us how it's going to apply to us in the future. So as we consider what we're doing now, we really have to think about this as precedent-setting. And it's not precedent-setting that we have the will frankly to completely control because we don't. We're being driven by a state authority that's being supported by the state legislature. And our resident from Rebecca, from Rebecca Lane, who commented in public comment addressed that. She's exactly right. This is way beyond us and it's impacting every community in California based on the assumptions that some people in Sacramento have made. And it's it's going to impact our town, you know? And we're trying really hard to seriously deal with the problem that we know it's going to impact our town in an adverse way. And we're trying to reconcile with that. We know that we really have a need for affordable housing. We have 1,500 people that work in the eight schools in Atherton. None of them can live in Atherton. They all have to commute significant travel time every single day to come to work. Our population doubles with our student population and the staff at those schools. That's a really big impact for Atherton. That that's a major feature in Atherton. And we know that these rules that the state is trying to put down on us as a one-size-fits-all for every community isn't the right solution for Atherton. So we're doing our best to try to work with these requirements and and make them, you know, as less impactful as possible is frankly the goal. But it's not a happy goal and it's not an easy goal. And and I really appreciate everyone here coming out because it's really important that we hear from you.
I'd like to echo what's been said. I thank everybody for their letters that they sent to us. Mr. Riddle came in to see me. I know both the mayor and myself have office hours. So we're happy to see you when you come in and at least hear what you have to say. So, you know, the state gave us these things that we've been looking at this for several years now. As I said last year, when I went around to the communities, everybody agrees where we should put this. Anywhere but near me, you know, that's what everybody said, not not near us, but over there. Okay? So it, you know, it has to be somewhere and there's requirements to get things to certain locations. And one of the, you know, one thing you have to consider is is somebody there going to develop it. Because it's not just put a plan together. It's you get audited and made sure that you're living up to the plan and living up to what you told the state you were going to do. And if not, then you have to, there are remedial things that you have to go do. So, you know, this is, this is not a fun thing for us. It's not a fun thing for y'all. There's been, you know, you know, some crosswires between the the planning commission. One, one of the people on the planning commission actually was on the council when Bay Road was added. And now he's on the planning commission and he took it off. So, you know, people change their minds and all that other stuff. But, you know, your important is important, you know, you bring up very good issues. Some people have worked very, very hard on it. I'd like to, you know, you know, and Mr. Morris and Rod and others, you know, have have really put in a lot of time. Spent a lot of time with with Brittany and that's very much appreciated. Whether or not all those their issues get incorporated, at least we're listening. And they have come up with some very good things. So I think it's important that you were here. I think it's important that you wrote to us. And, you know, I do appreciate that you're you're saying something and you've brought up some very good points. And we need to address those. So so anyway, that's it for me. I won't take up any more time. Thank you.
I I agree with everyone on the council and what they've said, but I think I'm gonna just let us keep going because it's almost 9:00 PM. So.
Let's go.
I feel the same way. So where we where is Mona? You're you're up. Can you talk a little bit about there were a few questions that came up that were legal questions?
So one of the first, the first question actually was a statement that is it true that neither the Attorney General's Office nor HCD can impose fines on us? That only a court can impose a fine if we are in violation? And the answer, the short answer to that is that's correct. What happens is that the Attorney General files a lawsuit, asks the court to find that the town's housing element does not substantially comply with the government code. And then it would be up to the court to impose the fines that I mentioned earlier based on the court's finding that the town, for example, is not in substantial compliance. However, what has been happening in other jurisdictions is that when a lawsuit is filed, it is oftentimes settled and then the affected community has been paying a fine or a penalty to either, you know, the Attorney General's Office, HCD, or the Housing Advocacy Group that brought the lawsuit. Because just as a reminder, it's not just the AG's office that can initiate a lawsuit. It's any affected party or housing advocacy groups, which there are a number of them. Another question was, is the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance a topic tonight? And the answer is no. That would be a topic of consideration at some point in the future, but not tonight. The next question, well, it was a statement that we, why are we adopting the zoning code? We're putting the cart before the horse. We don't even have a housing element. And the reason for that is because we missed the housing element deadline. And any jurisdiction that missed the housing element deadline is required to bring its zoning ordinance into compliance within one year of that missed deadline, which we have to comply with now. So in other words, if we had adopted our housing element on time and HCD had certified it as substantially compliant, we would have had two years and we would have had time to separate the two issues. But that's why they're being brought contemporaneously. Another question was, again, this was more of a statement that I'm not aware of any of the cities in Southern California having to do this and they are further behind. Again, that's a false statement. I'm going to give a list of cities that have been sued either by housing advocacy groups, AG's office or combination. That includes the city of Bradbury, Claremont, Fullerton, La Habra Heights, La Miranda, Laguna Hills, South Pasadena, Vernon, Manhattan Beach, Beverly Hills. Huntington Beach was recently sued. This is the second time. And that one did go through litigation and the court there found that Huntington Beach had violated California's housing element law. Earlier this year, city of Malibu settled with the state on compliance of the housing element law. HCD and AG's office sued city of Anaheim in 2022. That also went through the court proceedings and Anaheim lost. So there are a number of Southern California cities. They are not exempt from the same kind of results that could happen if we do not move forward. And and again, just by, just as a reminder, I'm not making these rules up. I'm not making these laws up. I'm just providing advice to you and letting you know based on meetings that, you know, we have had with HCD that they have told us that they will issue a notice of violation if we do not complete it within the timeline that we presented. Again, this is information sharing. This is not my opinion. And it is not, I don't have, I'm not taking a position here. So I'm just relaying to you what the statute say.
Mona, this is Elizabeth. And just to follow up, when you said that, oh, and HCD has the Attorney General file a lawsuit and then the courts levy the fine, we would have to, as a town, defend ourselves? Or is that just between, so if they file a lawsuit, they file it against us? And then we, if we're going to defend ourselves, we have to pay the fees to attorney fees to defend ourselves?
Yes, that is correct.
And so is that why so many of these other smaller jurisdictions have settled out of court? Because the law, the the court fees would be so enormous that it would not be reasonable for us to?
I cannot answer as to why they have settled. I have talked to a few city attorneys that were on that list and asked them. And the answer was that they knew they were going to lose. And so it was going to be more efficacious for them to settle than to go through the court proceedings, get a court order saying they were not substantially compliant, pay all of those fines and fees, and then have to comply with the housing element law. They would rather settle and move forward with a plan of action. Thank you.
Mona, just one quick question. One of our neighbors, you know, got a housing element approved and then rejected. So what's the situation if that were to happen here? Then do penalties and and assessments hit there? Or is it just a certain period of time they have to get things done?
It depends on the nature. So first of all, what happens is once we adopt our housing element, again, this goes back to the additional funding that our legislature and the governor's office has instilled in in fighting housing laws. And so they are now no longer just stopping and ensuring that the housing element is deemed substantially compliant. They are now monitoring them to ensure that the cities are. them to ensure that the cities are complying with the programs that are in there. So if you have a jurisdiction that adopts the housing element and decides to make changes, for example, that are no longer consistent with the housing element that was adopted, we are seeing HCD revoke that certification. And yes, correct, one of our neighbors in this county received that certification. There could be a number of options. One, in the notice of violation, which is the typical route for HCD, they rescind the, um, they give a notice of violation and give an opportunity to cure and correct essentially the violation. If that is not done, you, you, um, do get your housing element certification rescinded. You're open to builder's remedy. And depending on kind of the timeline that they have given you, based on my experience, um, HCD has not just immediately filed suit. They have given a few opportunities as they have done with the town of Atherton. Um, they sent us a letter earlier this summer. We've met again with them. They want to make sure we were on the right path. So in that circumstance, they'll give us an opportunity to right their perceived wrong. If we don't do that, yes, we can be subject to litigation, um, not just by the state, but also the, any, um, housing advocacy group. And that would also mean that we could be subject to the same fines and penalties I previously mentioned.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do you, you wanna, if we have no more questions for Mona, then you want to go ahead and throw out your individual items and we'll go as long as we can?
We'll go a long time.
Before we do that.
Sure.
I, I, I think it, there's some response to some comments that residents made that I think are appropriate. Um, one is, we've been assured by staff that absolutely every household that's within 500 feet of any, um, property that's considered, uh, by this council for multifamily housing has received multiple notices. So I, I'm just saying, you know, I know there's notices I throw away that don't, I don't read at times, but, um, but I'm just telling you, we've been, that's what we've been assured by staff about. Um, and, and I know they've worked really hard to notify people, not just in Atherton, but anyone within 500 feet in Redwood City and Menlo Park, depending on the location of the property. Secondly, there was a very, uh, robust process that we've gone through over these past four years to look at where we would consider, uh, putting or authorizing any kind of housing other than single family residences. And we've, I mean, we, we worked hard to put together criteria for that and to utilize that criteria in the course of our assessment. Um, we've looked, I think, at six different areas in town where, uh, that were brought, well, when staff started, the, the consultants, the planning consultants, which is different from our current, uh, planning consulting firm, uh, suggested what was about 25% of all the properties in Atherton to be considered. That was where this started. And we pared that down very, very dramatically because that was just totally unacceptable to the council. Um, of the six or seven areas that we've looked at, almost every resident in the areas that we looked at, um, sent us a letter saying under no condition or circumstance would they sell their property to a developer. That essentially makes that property undevelopable, if you believe the property owner. There's only three areas that we looked at out of those seven where we haven't gotten that letter from one of the households that we looked at. And those are the three that are, were subject to the SEQA. Not, not the POS properties, but the single family residence properties, uh, that we've talked about tonight. There's eight properties and, and we haven't gotten that letter from any of those property owners. What, on El Camino, we got that letter from, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's 80 or 90 or 95% of the property owners along El Camino. We got that on Alameda de los Pogos. We got it on Atherton Avenue. We got it on, uh, Valparaiso. So, uh, that, that is a pretty significant distinction. And one of the worries that I have is that if we don't do what we need to do to get approval from HCD, that they're going to take over that zoning decision and guaranteed, if they take over our zoning, everything we've looked at is going to end up being thrown into the multifamily, irregardless of what any residents have to say. And that's my biggest worry is if they do that, um, it's, it's going to be completely out of our control. And I, you know, I can't really find an example of where they've done that in another community in California, uh, but they've absolutely threatened it and it's worrisome. So, uh, well.
Well, I, I would just, I, I would just, you got the, the email from George, uh, from the governor's office today, um, uh, that I guess he was meeting with you. Uh, and there was a, the, the city attorney referenced a press release from the governor's office regarding the housing accountability unit. And here's the link. Here's a couple of quotes. It says, quote, "There is no community in our state that is exempt from doing its part to address homelessness and create new housing, whether by helping communities understand housing law or by countering NIMBY attacks. We will continue pressing forward to hold localities accountable for building their fair share of housing and helping individuals experiencing homelessness. We all have a role to play to ensure every Californian has a place to call home." And that's a direct quote from Governor Gavin Newsom this afternoon. And it goes on, but, um, I won't bore you. But, uh, so that came, um, through, over the lines and then through the, um, city manager to us.
Vice Mayor, um, if I can just add, um, while we've been in this meeting, I received another alert that Governor Newsom is holding a press release tomorrow in the Bay Area at 10 AM, announcing new legislation and funding announcements to further more housing legislation. So there will be more that will be, um, coming. So this is just a, a commitment that they are taking this seriously. They're going to fund these programs and they're going to fund the prosecution of noncompliance further.
Right.
Can I say something?
Sure, go for it.
Um, I wanted to address the question a lot of you asked about why we did not include El Camino and the Caltrain corridor as part of our SEQA analysis, since a few of you mentioned it. And I think, um, one of you mentioned that they have smaller lots and that's why they were not included, or at least why I voted no. So HCD had indicated to us that they do not view lots that are sub a half acre as good opportunity sites for multifamily. And all of the lots on ECR and close to Caltrain that are R1B are one third acre. So that is why all of those sites were not included in our SEQA analysis.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
Plus, plus, as Rick pointed out and I mentioned earlier, we have to develop on these things. And one of the things that's going to come up when Brittany finally gets to going with her thing is that, uh, you know, in, in this, we have to say, you know, how many units or how many lots we're going to have developed by a certain period of time. And if we don't, there's remedial action that we must take, which includes identifying additional units, additional locations. So, so, you know, we need to have locations that we can build on as soon as possible, as soon as we get this approved. That's, that's, you know, one of the driving points here. Go ahead. I'm done. Thank you.
Town Planner Brittany Bendix, let me go ahead and share my screen. One second. So I do have some specific questions for you. Um, some have been in the staff report and then reiterated on the slides, but I do want to make sure that we're keeping some level of organization throughout that discussion. Um, so what I would like to do is just kind of go through each one of these bullet points, um, and see if there's any questions or comments that you want to take now relative to SEQA and the initial study in the mitigated NIG deck, then transition into the housing element and general text amendments, uh, which do include that new program the council member just pointed out relative to a mid-cycle check-in. Um, and then the, and then we'll cover the development standards and some of the items that I raised earlier specific to those. So, um, is there, you know, any questions for me or comments that you want to provide on the SEQA analysis and moving forward with that? At this point tonight, our recommendation is only that you take the public comment, discuss it, and then continue it to an item at a, or a date certain.
And in that case, is this 16th?
Yeah.
No, it's the second.
Second.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're continuing that as well. Okay.
We're closing this meeting and.
Okay.
Well, if it's been approved by the planning commission approved it, and I, if no one has any questions on it, why wouldn't we close that off?
You need to do it at the hearing that the project is.
Okay, got it. Okay, fine. No problem. Thank you.
I, I'd like to give residents at least, you know, another week or two to, you know, collectively digest what this meeting, um, talked about and, uh, you know, have an opportunity to read the whole 1,700 pages, um, and understand that and then come back, uh, to the October 2nd meeting.
Okay. Well, I have a question about VMT.
All right.
The VMT, uh-huh.
So. I just want to confirm that my understanding of the VMT and why some projects were exempt from mitigation and some were. So my understanding is for the lots that have a higher VMT, so the Bay Road lots, those would then trigger mandatory mitigation measures that would, with the goal of improving the corridor, right?
Correct.
And not just mitigating their impact, but ideally improving.
Because they're in an existing high VMT area.
Right. And so then the Ravenswood and the Gilmore House and all those lots, because they're a low VMT, they will not have a similar assessment?
Correct. So skipping ahead to the development standards, one of the things that I presented tonight was memorializing that expectation in the development standards so that there's no exemption from that requirement should they move forward in a ministerial process.
And do you, uh, foresee that by doing these overlays in that terribly, uh, congested and quote unquote, dangerous area, that, uh, we can affect some safety measures to make that, um, corridor safer for children and bikes and, uh, everything?
So that's one of the things that would happen through a VMT analysis in coordination with the county and the city of Menlo Park. Um, the transportation analysis, for example, has identified that the city of Menlo Park has signalization of that intersection, including in their capital improvement program or plan. Uh, we've reached out to them and there's currently no funding for that. There's no actual implementation steps to proceed with that. Um, having a development provides an option to pursue that and mitigate not just the development, but the existing conditions. Similarly, um, I mentioned this at the planning commission meeting, uh, in August, there has been Menlo Park, Menlo Park and San Mateo County have recently done a bicycle and pedestrian improvement study on the corridor of Ringwood Avenue. And I think it's Coleman, um, where they're looking to, uh, enhance the bike lane on Ringwood. They've identified the cost necessary to do that. This is just a draft study that's been released. It needs to go through a public process, just similar to any sort of bike and pedestrian plan update we would do. And I know you're familiar with discussing. So once that's adopted, that would be another opportunity for a developer to see a set of improvements that the city and the county, um, have ident, or the school district has identified and prioritized and commit to providing for those.
Wouldn't that project that was referenced here that's behind Flood Park, wouldn't that?
Yeah.
Be triggering a light?
Right.
On, on the other, on our end of Bay Road?
It might. It's, um, difficult to say because that project is 100% affordable housing. The state does provide certain exemptions from SEQA.
Got it.
And so that gets to my point of, this seems to be an important issue that the town is empathetic towards. While it's not an issue for SEQA, we could take an approach in the development standards to try and ensure that developers have to provide some sort of contribution and analysis.
Yeah. So I, I just, a little, a little personal note about that. I had two grandsons that went to Menlo Atherton High School and from, uh, ours, our, across El Camino side, uh, they would ride and, but it was the, they had the bike, um, corral down on, uh, Ringwood there. Uh, they've since moved it to the corner of Oak Grove and Middlefield, which makes it a lot easier for the high schoolers to, to get their bikes to. But I know how horrible it was at that time for them to ride their bike all the way up Ringwood to the bike corral, uh, at that end of the, of the school. So, um, it, it, it's, it's, it truly is a very dangerous environment. And I feel your pain and I'm so sorry. And I would just be very hopeful that we might be able to, uh, make a positive impact at some point in that.
Can I ask a question? Um, you said, I think that I want to applaud you for codifying this into, so that we'll actually have a way to enforce it and it'll be, and it won't just go away. Is there a standard for what developers? So you're saying we're going to try to codify that developers will have to contribute to mitigation measures. Is there best practices that we can follow? How do we actually do that?
So what it means.
A million dollars for a light. Can we expect them to pay? How, how does that work?
So you need the VMT analysis to identify what the actual threshold of impact is.
Is for them to do the analysis? We can't say they have to present?
So, so we, we would request the analysis and then there are measure, there are, um, the tiers embedded in the mitigation measure actually aligned with the county's Coalition of Governments, CCG. Um, I'm blinking on the acronym, sorry. Um, they have a set, like a menu in each tier of items that you can do, um, that are required for larger projects that generate 100 trips, uh, that we automatically send to the county. So what we're trying to capture here are the smaller developments that don't necessarily hit that 100 trip threshold.
So I hear you saying that there are standards out there we'll be able to use, but we'll have to look at the lower end of the ones that are out there?
Right.
Okay. And you'll be able to get back to us with what those might be?
Yes. We actually were able to share some of those with the planning commission because that came up as a, a question in their first July meeting. And that was provided in their August staff report. So we can move, shift some of that over into the next, uh, round of information we provide with you.
So what more feedback do you want from us on this?
Uh, that's helpful. I can move forward if, if everybody's ready.
You want to summarize what you heard us say?
Um, let me get to the next slide, one thing at a time.
Was this the section where we're supposed to talk about the mid-cycle review?
We're getting there.
That's it.
That's my next, my next. So really what I heard you say is that there is general consensus in favor towards looking at putting the VMT mitigation measure in development standards.
I would say yes.
Okay, strong. We'll look at it, that there's openness to it. I can characterize it that way.
I'd like to understand it a little bit better, Brittany, after the, we can talk about it next Tuesday or so.
Yeah. Okay. So the, the next topic then was looking at this new program that we are providing in response to some rolling feedback that we're getting from HCD. The rolling feedback, of course, is in response to this notice of violation, uh, that we received in July and trying to work with HCD on achieving our timeline. They're looking at the work that we've. They're looking at the work that we've done and what I published in July as I'm trying to move this forward. So I am getting feedback here and there. I did let the planning commission know that this was ongoing and they, uh, include, they did include in their motion, um, an acknowledgement that staff would be updating the housing element to align with the feedback we're getting from HCD. So this isn't something, you know, that is uh, unknown. So the mid-cycle check-in is program three point eight, one, one D in the revised housing element, which is attachment eight. Um, or page one sixty-four of attachment eight. Don't have the page number of the seventeen hundred page version, but I think George might help me out here.
I can go.
I can find it.
What number is it in eight?
It's attachment eight, page one sixty-four.
But age thirteen oh four of seventeen.
Oh, four.
Seventeen twenty-six.
Of seventeen twenty-six.
And these are your edits now?
Thirteen.
Yeah, this is what.
Because what I looked at the other day was four, but we talked about three, but then the, the remediation of number, the dot number three was substantially larger than the number.
This is the language as it appears in attachment eight. I haven't proposed any changes. I'm bringing it up for discussion by the city council to see where you guys would like to see this headed. Um, and I do have my colleague Asher Cohen here from M Group that can kind of get into the weeds a little bit on what's required from HCD and state law and where we have some flexibility.
Okay.
I have a question too.
Okay, well, my input would be, I, I thought that the three was somewhat reasonable. Four was a step too far. I'm not crazy about SB ten. I'd like to see that disappear.
See talking.
And, uh, and as far as, you know, rezoning additional ones, I, I thought that we had, there was a discussion on, you know, giving two or three more sites or something like that, maybe one or two sites, but I'd like to see whatever we can trade to get SB ten out.
Yeah, I agree with you on the SB ten because it says right there for individual property owners to apply. Does that mean anybody could apply for SB ten and now their property will become rezoned to ten? That's not acceptable. So do we have to get all of these or these ones they set or these ones we're proposing?
These are placeholders of programs we're aware that are out there, um, that just identify potential opportunities.
Because here says four and there's three. So it says you have to develop four and then our first item says three. Are you saying you think you can was, get down to three from what they're originally saying four? I'm trying to understand where these came from.
Sure. So Asher, do you want to jump in at this point?
Where is he?
He's online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He's going to magically appear like one of our public commenters did in our planning commission meeting. They went from online to in person during their public.
Good evening, everyone. This is Asher Kof from M Group. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, my video cannot be turned on, but I assure you I'm here. Um, so as Brittany was saying, this was in response to an HCD comment about allowing housing mobility. The, this is a menu. It's some options, things we've seen, um, HCD approve in other jurisdictions, kind of similarly sized jurisdictions. Um, so those what we were presenting. And, um, the, the idea of this is really giving, um, yeah, I think the point of it's three rather than four, that's absolutely, um, doable. It is saying, you know, if we know that the RM ten is a new overlay, it's a new idea for Atherton. If there's something that, um, we can work on, you know, at the mid-cycle point to get development that works for Atherton, uh, we can then look at it then and see where we can make some changes if, uh, the development's not being, if not coming apace to, um, HCD's liking. So, um, the third bullet is really a way to say, you know, if there's other ideas out there, things that we can see, um, things we hear from developers or from, um, you know, people in Atherton, we really can have those ideas as we go forward towards this potential check-in.
But what about SB ten, Asher?
We don't have a control over that, right? SB ten is a Senate bill.
It's like a builder's remedy for individuals.
We don't have to adopt an SB ten.
Yeah. So can we take that out?
Yes.
I would take.
Yes, it can be taken out. Um, it's something that was, um, approved of Monte Serrino, um, which seems similar, but yes, if the council actions take it out, it can absolutely.
Definitely, that's got to go.
That, I think that's something that Portola Valley did, where they allowed an overlay to any property in the town.
Oh, yeah.
And which is part of the problem that they ran into with their residents and I wouldn't support it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think the Portola Valley one was, wasn't it a lower density than ten or?
RM five maybe.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't RM ten. It was, they would allow any property owner that wanted to increase the density to be able to do so. And I don't remember what the specific number was, but it, it was throughout the entire town. And that got a big reaction.
Can I ask questions about how that process works? Just like, does someone have to do a CEQA then for their, like, we had to do a CEQA for every lot we were thinking about, so.
They did that before they zoned.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, but we don't want this.
I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor. I'm just like, I, how does this work is very, um.
Well.
Cover it next.
I think they would have to do CEQA if you're going to upzone.
Yeah.
Uh, and you know, up, um, densify.
So. I had another question.
I recognize the need for a mid-cycle review. Um, we have an obligation and, uh, incur review from HCD, I think on an annual basis, but this is looking at what happens with our RM ten properties. These are multifamily properties that we've identified. And I, I've got a couple of questions. One is we're not identifying this with respect to RM twenty forty. We're just identifying this with respect to RM ten. I, I don't know why. Um, maybe it's in our interest to limit what we identify, but, uh, uh, but in, if you look at the whole zoning change that's being proposed in the housing element, frankly, the RM ten piece is quite a bit smaller than what we're doing in this RM twenty forty zone, which is to completely rezone the properties that all the schools are on. To make them eligible for twenty units an acre or forty units an acre. That's a much more significant impact on the number of housing units that could be built in Atherton than what we're looking at with this RM ten. So I just have a question about that. And secondly, um, I understand that the issue of, uh, if there are fewer than X number, it had been four, maybe it's now three, which is obviously better than four, um, then out of the eleven, if fewer than that have been developed, then we will go into these bullet point issues. I, I, I don't have a problem saying to HCD, and I think we need to say to HCD that if there isn't development along the multifamily corridor that we're approving here, then we will do some other things, which at the end of the day is look at adding additional properties into this multifamily possibility, right? But I don't, but I think we're choosing what the number is as the minimum, whether it's two, three or four. And I'd much prefer just to say if there isn't development in the, uh, RM ten, uh, uh, zoning, then we'll make these adjustments rather than put a hard line on the number. Because I think that creates a bunch of prob- potential problems.
Are we putting that number?
I think we're creating, what, when you and I spoke, it, that, that's, that's on us creating that number, right? HCD didn't say you have to have three or you have to have four.
No, but they're going to tell us what they want.
No, they didn't give us a specific number. We do have some flexibility there, but we do have to provide a number.
Do, is, to follow up on what he was saying, so we, this is only for the, this one multifamily. Did they also say that if you don't rent out or build your ADUs at the same check-in point? Is it for our entire or did they single out the multifamily?
So I'm going to let Asher jump in here, but I'll, I'll try and succinct what I understand from it first. Um, the RM ten program is novel to Atherton. It's not something that we've done in other jurisdictions, especially at the ten dwelling units per acre. Um, most of the other programs are up at twenty dwelling units per acre because the intent is to supply unit numbers that meet the RENA category. This is more of a qualitative program that's addressing simply AFFH. There could be a time where maybe we look at this differently and we want to, to get RENA numbers out of this program. But at this point, it's strictly for AFFH.
Right.
HCD doesn't get to see something like this regularly. So adding, telling us that they want to see a program that there's going to be some sort of performance review mid-cycle is their way of having us report back to them in our APR how we're doing. Um, I believe there is an existing program that addresses the RM twenty and RM forty sites as well. Is that correct, Asher?
Yeah, it's this page.
Yes, Brittany, there's programs that address those sites. Um, but we've had, uh, HCD's been comfortable with our RM twenty, RM forty programs. So, um, they, uh, didn't ask for any edits to those. Um, the own, there is a mid-cycle program in the housing element that was in a private, sorry, a prior draft, uh, three point eight, one, one B, which focuses on SB nine. Um, it's a little bit different. The towns had, yeah, there's been SB nine actions in the town. So it's something that isn't, and it's, you know, a much more broad, you know, it's a state law. So it's something that HCD is much more familiar with. So that check-in is a little bit different than this. Um, which is really focused on the RM ten for all the reasons Brittany presented.
Okay.
Are they going to be interested if these lots actually develop ten units per acre? Like if someone develops five, is that, does that count or are we hoping for ten?
It, um, oh, go ahead, Asher.
Sure. Um, the requirement is multifamily rental housing is the housing type they're interested in. So, um, I, I think if that type comes in, but it's five units, I, I think that would be, you know, my understanding is that would be considered a win from HCD's perspective.
Yeah, why don't we say RM ten uh, sites? Yeah, I guess you, if you say that, RM ten sites. So it doesn't matter whether it's got five houses of six or ten, right?
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah. So for, at this point in time, the number of units isn't as important as HCD seeing that the town is opening up the types of housing options that are available, right? So this could be a for-sale condo that then turns into a rental unit. There's some diversity there that isn't already inherently provided in the type of housing in our housing stock. Now I do want to put out there that if we are at mid-cycle and we find that, you know, we're not meeting our RENA targets relative to low income and we also have an inclusionary housing program, we might have to look at how all of this balances out. But that's not reflected in this mid-cycle performance evaluation. That would be separate part of our overall RENA annual tracking.
At, at that mid-cycle, let's say we were in the scenario you just said, could we then adjust design standards and other things as well to accommodate the lack of development?
Absolutely.
So we're not stuck with it. Yeah, we can't, we're not stuck. We can still change them later.
Uh, the biggest concern I as staff have in terms of providing guidance for you is that if you make standards more cumbersome, HCD will not look favorably towards that. If you are looking at standards and finding that they're constraining development and you're making develop more flexible, um, that, that would be consistent with what HCD is looking for.
So that's a lever that we could dial back if we needed to.
Right.
Okay, so my first comment on the content on the mid-cycle check-in is to try to reduce the number that's required and we're kind of circling three. Uh, in the first bullet point, then it says, if we don't do that, then what are we going to do? And I don't want to say identification of at least three new sites. We can just say identification of new sites.
I agree with that.
I mean, i- if, if we've developed, if there've been two sites where there's been development, then maybe we just need one or two. We don't need a whole new three sites. So I, I don't, I don't want to say we're going, going to identify three new sites. And I take it, is a site a property or is it contingent properties?
It's, it's a property. I think the reason that we're using the site language is because we do have some properties that only a portion of that is identified for development potential. Well, POS sites and even the PFS sites, those, those footprints are generally constrained in certain areas. Um, I will raise this with HCD as part of our ongoing informal check-in. This, this question of in the bullet, do we need to clarify what number of sites? My apprehension here is that these, the programs have, the programs are required to have quantifiable measures to, to show some sort of measurement, right? Um, but I, I do agree that there's vagueness in the second one that doesn't necessarily identify a number of sites. Um, and the third one, which, the third bullet, which as staff, we intentionally have added in there to try and give us more flexibility. Um, so I'll see what I can do relative to that. Um, why we have a specific number in there right now is because we're anticipating that's what HCD would come back and tell us we need.
Take out a SB ten to start.
Yeah. So I hear we're consistently saying, take out the second one and the first one may not commit us to a specific number. And is everyone okay with the third one? Cause that one's more, that's more general.
It's vague.
So do you think that that would be enough, having just those two?
No, they'll make us put a number.
Well, we'll think about it.
They will.
All right. We'll work. Um, but I also hear that the, in the, the beginning of the paragraph, the trigger for evaluation is three, not four.
Right.
And then are you okay with the dates? So checking in.
About, about twenty twenty-nine.
Or.
Wait, did they give us these days or we're offering them?
No, these dates are consistent with the dates that we've given in other housing elements. We haven't pushed it much further because it is supposed to be mid-cycle. We're already four years into this process, which is why it kind of seems so tight.
How about January twenty-seven?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
January twenty-seven.
No, no, that's just one more month. That's one more month.
Okay. March twenty-seven.
I mean, I don't know. This is four years into an eight-year cycle.
I think it's.
Yeah, I think that's right. It's okay.
December, December twenty-seven.
So in terms of the timeline, first step, December twenty twenty-six, identification of whether or not any sort of action is necessary. Um, which we should have
Then we have a year to do.
A general sense of based on what we've done in our APR for the year prior. Um, and then what we're looking for is going into our APR in April of twenty twenty-seven to capture twenty twenty-six. Um, the next step.
By twenty-seven to be effective in twenty-eight.
Right. So then twenty twenty-seven would be the time period that we would do. Right, so then twenty twenty seven would be the time period that we would do public outreach to work through a solution. And any sort of additional SEQA, uh, that's required. And then the goal would be to have something approved by the end of that year. Um, and then effective in January twenty twenty eight. So given the timeframe, we've seen this process go through. If there was to be any cushion, it might be in that evaluation side.
I think we're pushing it the way it is.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Things, things in Atherton do take a longer period of time. What about giving that review period, um, eighteen months instead of twelve months? So that it's.
Or times better.
So that one-year period from December twenty sixth to December twenty seven becomes December twenty sixth to June of twenty seven.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's good. I mean, the two-year period is February, right? Uh, the four-year period would be February twenty seven, cause our, our date was January thirty first twenty three. So to extend it six months, I, I, makes it more achievable.
And the goal is also to then reach that goal, that programmatic goal before. The end of the cycle, we're leading into the evaluation period for the next cycle. Because then there are implications of what happens if a program fails moving into the seventh cycle.
So, I'm sorry, Rod, Rod, um, one of the council's gotta let you do that, but if you are, you need to come up to the mic so that we can get it into recording.
Are you guys okay with letting him?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Just on the condition, right now it's limited to RM ten, right? What happens if we're satisfying the ADUs and the RM twenties and forties? And we're actually achieving the goals that we set out, shouldn't we be able to interlock the two in this condition? Uh, even if we're not ma- making it on the RM tens?
It's affirmative housing is my understanding, cause that, the ones on the schools don't count because they're not for everybody. It's only for teachers, so they're not affirmative housing. And the smaller ones, and correct me if I'm wrong, the smaller ones like ADU, is it like a, you can't have a family in there, so. Those categories, so we need this category multifamily that we.
So is this conditioned on us actually delivering affirmative fair housing units?
It's, it's a requirement.
If we don't, uh, deliver, we're gonna be subject to the review and the.
We have to build. We have to build, have to have a permit in to start building. Nobody's moving into the house yet.
Yeah, we can't get away from not doing.
The affirmative housing is, uh, before us.
This, this is.
This is.
The mayor's correct, this is two different programs.
Yeah.
We have the RENA requirements, which we're meeting with, you know, twenty three Oakwood. And ADUs and the school developments and the PFS zones. And then you've got the whole AFFH requirements, which are diversified housing stock. That's the target for those particular units, they can be market rate units, they don't have to be affordable house.
Which is a section that we're not reviewing right now. I mean, the section that, that talks about AFFH is section, uh, three point eight one one B.
Correct, but the RM ten. The RM ten zone that's being created is for that AFFH category.
Right, and I think that's important, our residents here, cause we've a couple times heard people say. That you're building houses that are too expensive, they're not low-income housing. And for a, for affirmative housing, it does not have to be low income, it just has to be a different category of housing that's multifamily. This is their, one of their requirements they're putting on us. And it's a little bit odd in that they don't give us a specific number of how many of those we need to have. So it, it's, uh, yeah, so it's a little confusing.
We've got very low income at fifty seven units.
If you gotta look, you gotta look at this table of our requirement to build low-income housing, multifamily overlay. Basically, this whole plan is relied on Menlo College. If Menlo College doesn't come through and she has this massive density on the RM tens. We will guarantee to fail, it just won't work, the numbers don't lie, I mean, study this sheet. And it, there's just no way to make the numbers work, if Menlo College doesn't build and you give her fifty percent density. You're never gonna comply with these numbers.
Well, we certainly want Menlo Park to happen. I mean, that, we need those numbers, you're absolutely right, we need the Menlo Park for our numbers. And it doesn't qualify as AFFH, but it is, we need it for our, our, our RENA numbers, so yeah, it's.
I think, I think we have direction on this particular.
Okay, we're, we're getting tired, so can I ask a consensus here, we're gonna continue this? He wants to do one more, all right, I would like to do one more. And then I wanna continue to a certain date of October second at four o'clock. And we'll repeat that about five times before we're done.
So were there any other questions relative to changes in the general plan, uh, including the housing element? Sorry.
Repeat that, I didn't hear somebody else was talking to me.
There wa- there was one that came up from a council member that I think is using the restroom. And, and that was, uh, with respect to the removal of land use policy LU one point four, which limits the heights townwide to thirty-four feet. The question was by this council member whether, whether we should just say height limits townwide to thirty-four feet. Um, are limited to that for single-family or multifamily. Except for the RM twenty and RM forty, uh, multifamily zone or something like that. But that was his question and perhaps Brittany can address.
As opposed to making a new category, was that the question, that was his question, right?
The question was, can we modify the existing land use one point four policy? That sets townwide height limits at thirty-four feet.
Right.
To distinguish between single-family and multifamily and then also, uh, institutional uses. And we can do that, my, my concerns isn't so much. The number here, my concern is that you're putting a development standard in the general plan. And it's a transparency issue, because when you look for general, when you look for development standards. You don't typically look for those in the general plan. Um, and in terms of communicating expectations, I think it's better to have a height limit asserted. In a, in the zoning code document.
I agree.
A- absolutely, absolutely.
Good point.
Absolutely. And he didn't really understand.
Now let's continue the meeting.
Was that the one more, or was it there?
I would say that's one more, I know that he didn't wanna go to the bathroom and he wants to continue, but I am tired and we're gonna.
Doesn't reveal off around you. Okay, let's stop.
All right, so what's the procedure for continuing, do I just say we're continuing, or? Do I have to make a motion, do I ask for a motion to do that?
So you would say that I would like to con, I would seek a motion to continue the public hearing to October second at four PM. And then we should get a second and take roll, please.
But before you do that, just wanna clarify that you are also gonna continue public comment. At that October second meeting, is that the council's intent?
Yes.
Or is it to get, so you're gonna take more public comment and then have discussion after that.
I have a logistical request, if we're gonna do this. We always have a hard stop because Parks and Rec needs the room, can they go somewhere else for this meeting? So that we don't run into a two-hour end for that meeting for their.
That's a great suggestion.
And the question, I think there's also a question, should that meeting be at four o'clock or at six o'clock? So that four o'clock residents can attend.
Well, don't we have to do it at the regular time, cause it's, you're saying a regularly noticed time?
The, the study session is a special meeting and as you adjourn this evening, you would adjourn to a date and time.
So we can set a different time, but not a different date.
Let's let the baby, you know, let's say five o'clock, because I hear Mr. Winmer grumbling that he has to.
I thought you were talking about.
Okay, so do we have consensus on a time?
Are, are, are we stopping now?
Yeah, yes, we're continuing now.
She, she brought up four different questions, we've only gone through one.
Right, so when, when we, when, yeah, cause I think we're getting tired, we're, we're broken down, everyone's talking, we're, we're, we're done, I think. So we're gonna continue, Stacy made the point that we should make sure we have some order. So we will pick back initially with picking up on your questions and then open for public comment. George asked, do we have both public comment and pick up on our response to these questions? And I think the consensus was both, and that maybe we'd continue your part first and then open to public comment.
Why are we opening global comment?
Because the whole point of this just was to let people.
We're not gonna get through this.
We're gonna be here all night.
You got, you got these three questions and then all the issues of setbacks, high.
I know, all design criteria. Nobody's even brought that up and that's pretty big, but we're, I guess we established earlier that that was already decided.
Well, why don't we find out who's, who's willing to stay a little longer? I am.
I'm a night owl, no problem.
Okay. Okay, you know.
So are we saying that we don't wanna start early at four? And we don't, but if we start at four and we move the location of the people at six. We can, we can still have a meeting where we're doing it in the daylight as opposed to ten, eleven o'clock at night, some of us get tired.
Okay. If you wanna do it at four and we put on doing it till seven, seven thirty, that's fine. That's the problem.
So first question, can we move that, the, the, the people that have this room at six o'clock?
Can Parks go to Jennings Pavilion or something?
Can we ask them and they'll say, okay.
Make them sit outside.
Okay, so that we agree to, all right, so.
Let's try and have a three-hour meeting.
So we will start at, on the October second at four. And we will eliminate the need to be out of the room so that we could extend a little bit past six if we needed to, hopefully not.
And to, to address Councilmember DeGolia's concern, I think it would be helpful for staff to consolidate the specific issues in the questions. For the council, you start on those. And if you wanna add additional public comment toward the end or do it at the very beginning, as Councilmember Winmer suggests, you can flip it either way you'd like. It's probably better to do it at the beginning.
Yes, I would say at the beginning, so we can get the, you know, the, the word out for people.
So maybe we, we don't take more public comments.
Yeah, I know, we've already done public comments, I don't understand. I know, and we just had a meeting with public comments.
You're gonna hear.
You're gonna hear the same public comments again.
But maybe from different people.
And also, the whole point of this, the, the reason why we're doing this is because we had significant feedback. That people didn't have enough time to digest this level of information. And I for one, having carried around this multiple things like this, I totally hear you. And I think that's a real request. So I thought the bright reason why we're continuing is, is to allow people more time to digest it and come back, as well as us.
We're continuing, because, because you said you were tired, you wanted to go home. That's why we're continuing.
No, we started.
Three people who said that they're willing to stay here.
We are continuing to allow more residents some time to come back and feedback.
Whatever you want.
You can also limit your public comment period. On the next agenda, you know, thirty minutes and then it gives you more time to.
So we can limit it to three minutes and then thirty minutes.
Maybe we should go through the four questions.
Well, three minutes is a co- standard comment time, so.
I understand, that is, that is not adequate.
So, uh, is there a motion from the council, or do you wanna continue this evening?
I would put a motion to continue to a specific date of October second at four o'clock in this room.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that mean that we don't address any more questions tonight?
No, it's, it's nine fifteen, we're getting punchy, we, we, the whole decor is like falling apart here. So I think we need a little more time to come back and be at our best to make these decisions.
I'm not gonna finish it that day, I can guarantee you, there's too much, you're only, you took, you, you addressed one question out of seven or eight.
I hear ya. I hear ya, this, that's the whole point of this, there's a lot here to unpack.
So that means we have to commit.
You're, you're deciding not to meet the October sixteenth deadline is what you're doing.
That's not what we said, we were told by staff that if we, if we put it, what's the word for it? If we, if we put the motion forward on October second, it still can be heard and accepted on the sixteenth.
If you get through all these things, but you're, you only got through one of seven or eight.
So what are you proposing, are you saying you're?
Finish at least her four tonight.
Well, I had a motion and a second, and I had some A's, I assume you're an A.
I'm an A.
And. So let's take everyone's vote again, so who's willing to continue and who wants to continue right now? So who's, who's, all right, the motion is to continue it and stop now. So who's, all in favor, say aye for that, and I'm an aye. You already said aye.
I was just trying to support you, you know, it doesn't matter.
All right.
I can stay all night.
All right.
I think this is gonna take a lot of time, and I think we should do more tonight. Because we might actually hit a stopping point and need to continue versus artificially deciding when we still clearly have energy. Okay, so I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to cover.
I agree.
So we start at four o'clock.
Okay, so it sounds like I don't have a quorum on continuing at this moment.
I'd like to continue this meeting till at least ten thirty. No later than ten thirty, I'm recommending. Anything's helpful? Sorry.
Let's see how good we do this now.
Yeah, yeah, go have a donut. So is, is this the second point?
This was, uh, so we just completed talking about the mid-cycle check-in. And then while Councilmember DeGolia was out of the room, we talked about the need to update the. Uh, LU one point four policy. Or to remove it, rather, and there was, uh, what I was getting from the council members. While you were out of the room was that there was general consensus on removing this policy. So that the zoning code would be the, um, location of any specific height standard. And that was based on transparency for developers, um, and consistency with other zoning or other development standards. So then closing this section out in terms of the general plan updates, I was asking if there were any other questions. Specific to the housing element update, um, or other areas of the general plan.
Brittany, can you tell us what page number that is on in the packet?
I think it's in attachment ten.
You know, I, mine was not organized in attachments.
I, I, George gave me the attachment.
On page one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight.
One four, okay.
Four seventy-six, okay, one four seven seven.
That's the general plan edits. Anthony, would you mind sharing your screen so I can flip through these?
One four seven seven, it's the title page.
Yeah.
Of the general plan amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. And so we are looking at the LU.
I was on slide eight.
I don't see it here. These are just dates.
The edit is on seventy-eight.
Okay, well, that makes sense then.
Goals, objectives, policies, and action, policy LU one point four.
Yeah.
Redline.
So I, I have a question. So Brittany, your proposal is to. Remove the thirty-four-foot height limit from the general plan. And put it into the zoning arrangements. But it looks like you keep in the general plan the FAR.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that last part with the door closing.
The, the FAR requirement, m- maximums?
In single-family.
Are you referring to the LU dash one table?
I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the LU one table.
Yeah, so the intent of that table is. Yeah, so the intent of that table is to discuss the residential building intensity and population density in the context of land use planning in the land use element. What I've done here is keep the existing, um, analysis for single-family low density and then added the multifamily overlays so that there's some transparency that we don't just have single-family zoning that provides residential opportunities. We have multifamily overlays as well.
Okay. Can I, can I make a, a correction? Cause in your double asterisk footnote, FAR, I think, may, okay, increase.
So any sort of typos or corrections like that you can send to me directly.
Great, thank you. Well, this looks pretty straightforward. Say again?
Can you keep it in both places?
The multifamily overlays?
Uh, thirty-four.
I think being in the general plan, it doesn't make sense, especially it won't be up.
One of.
Well, I don't even see it in, in here.
One of the problems of keeping it in the general plan is that any development that would go above thirty-four feet or whatever the feet articulated in the zoning code is would then require a general plan amendment. And there are, um, there, the dormitory on Menlo College that was recently constructed is, is an example where that exceeded the thirty-four height limit. So, um, it's in conflict with the general plan, yet it got approved and developed for the zoning code and.
Okay.
Trying to resolve that.
I must be asleep because I do not see a thirty-four foot height limit in this chart, LU one.
It's the red line at the bottom of the page, policy LU dot four.
Where they deleted it. You just slashed it out. No wonder I didn't see it. It's deleted.
It's red line.
Having it in two places is a bookkeeping problem. If you have things in multiple places, when you change it, then, then you, you know, maybe you didn't change it somewhere else.
So it's a double negative.
The multifamily twenty and forty. We allow more than thirty-four feet.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So we need a reminder to pay building code so that it can get variance and get more than thirty-four feet as both the general plan, which puts a stricter on it. Which is what, did I understand this intent?
I don't mean to be rude, but we're, we're falling apart on our structure here, so. For one, if you're gonna comment, you have to come to the microphone and we're not taking public comment now.
I think we should take staff's comments, staff's recommendation. Move forward.
Are there any other questions about changes to the general plan or on the housing element text?
Uh, well, yeah. Uh, I mean, this, this is proposing that we, uh, create a floor area ratio for RM ten of fifty percent. And plus whatever incentives may be provided for below-grade parking and whatever sculpt lower roof lines is. And we've talked about providing potential incentives for, uh, creating habitable attic space, which isn't referenced here. I think that fifty percent is too high for the floor area ratio for RM ten. And look, for exam, I mean, and I think the whole issue is, well, there's a really important need to create incentives for people to put parking underground. Uh, really important because, I mean, particularly thinking about the Bay Road properties where you have single-family residences backing up to them. If they're gonna have garages right on their back border, notwithstanding the setback, you can put in an accessory dwelling unit back there that, and that, that includes a garage, then I think that's a problem. And I would much prefer to do everything we possibly can to get the parking to be underground. And I think that's gonna require some incentives. And what you've proposed is an incentive to increase FAR. And I can imagine that's workable. Uh, we have to figure out what that percentage would be, but I'd start the FAR at thirty percent rather than fifty percent.
That's too low. And if you look at the different types of houses that she proposed with the marquee development and with the Pasadena development, they're higher.
But I don't think we want that level of.
You know, I think we want things that look like Atherton that are gonna get built.
And.
Um, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I think there's a very big conversation we need to have about FAR that's outside of talking about the general plan. So maybe our guidance to staff would be have that, this reflect that future conversation.
Yeah, and that's exactly what will happen. This table is really just meant to reflect whatever actually gets adopted in the development standards.
So I'm just raising, the FAR number should, shouldn't be agreed to.
I agree. They should talk, we should talk about it, but this isn't the.
But you gotta look at what she put in place.
Yeah, I know.
Anything else or should I move on?
That's it.
So you summarized that we're going to talk about FAR.
We'll get to FAR for sure.
I feel like we're gonna talk a lot about.
Uh, we will, to summarize, um, we will amend the mid-cycle program as we've previously discussed. I don't have any other recommendations to changes in the actual housing element text. Um, the, uh, thirty-four foot height limit will be removed as is currently proposed. So I don't need to make any sort of modifications to my, my suggestions there. Um, and then we will amend this table that we were just discussing to reflect whatever is, um, ultimately approved in the standards.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anthony, next slide. Okay, so this gets, this starts to get into the development standards. The first thing that I want to bring to your attention are the changes in the land use tables. And earlier in my presentation, I made sure to distinguish those from the actual physical standards on development. This is mostly just identifying what land uses are allowed in which districts and any sort of special provisions related to that and the entitlement action necessary. Are there any questions on this?
Anthony, it starts on page fourteen eighty-four.
Attachment twelve, fourteen eighty-four of the consolidated PDF.
Yep.
And a lot of the red line additions are state law.
We went over these ones.
Yeah, I went, yeah.
I'm getting there.
Alright, these are not in order.
So, I have a question. The public, the PFS zone seventeen point three six, we have a lot of redlined stuff that we've eliminated. Is that because we're giving ministerial approval for multifamily for all of the school sites?
Yes.
Is it possible to put it on the screen so that we're all seeing the same thing? Cause we're all shuffling through it. Mine aren't numbered the same as everyone else's.
I can pull that up. Let me get there. I would find it helpful if you can keep us organized with the regular PowerPoint and then I can share the relevant attachment.
So.
So this is attachment twelve.
Attachment twelve.
And what was the, um?
This is two of forty-four, fourteen eighty-five.
What does the P stand for in the right-hand column?
Permitted.
Per what?
Permitted.
Permit it. Oh, sorry, okay.
So these are the land use tables that I was mentioning. There's one for every zoning district. It lists the land use and then the.
You're right.
I think, Brittany?
What does the P four and P five mean?
I don't know what you're talking about.
It means that there's a footnote.
That's page eight.
It's on your screen right in front of you, guys.
I know, but, you know.
So the P four and P five has a different meaning?
She went to page eight to address Councilmember Holland's question.
Yeah, I skipped ahead, guys.
I didn't even hear your question.
Well, so I had two questions. So keep up. The first question was me in seventeen point three two, the residential district, all of those additions are state law mandates. So those aren't specific to Atherton.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
The next page.
But wait, before you move on.
It's the same thing.
Seventeen point three two?
Is state law.
Yep.
That we're required to add. Same thing with seventeen point three three. The old seven, same thing with seventeen point three four. And then
Yeah.
the PFS zone, that's where we have things that were eliminated. That starts on page fourteen ninety-one. And my question was, it's being, it's eliminating stuff like land use permit, environmental review, and that's because we are giving ministerial approval for all the school housing sites that are at.
Got it.
Right, so.
Right, and that is because that is an integral part of our arena program. And we need to demonstrate that there is some facilitation of that development.
You're a star.
Okay. Can I ask a question? The multifamily residential uses, you've got it noted as P five.
What number, what number?
On page fourteen ninety-one.
No, 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 the thirteen, seventeen three six.
Yeah, seventeen three six.
Go ahead.
In your, in the chart, what is the P, uh, five mean?
Oh, that's the footnote.
It means that it's permitted and then there's a footnote number five that relates to it.
Which is the next page.
It's on fourteen ninety-three.
Shall only be permitted on sites with a multifamily overlay designation, subject to compliance with objective design standards. Multifamily residential uses.
It, it looks, it, it looks to me like the description of multifamily residential uses had included, uh, had, uh, as a requirement, housing for very low and low-income households. And that's been taken out. So now multifamily could be all, um, not afford, none of it could be affordable.
It would be subject to an inclusionary housing program established by the town.
I don't think we want multifamily that doesn't include affordable housing.
Right.
I mean, that's the reason we're doing it.
Right.
In the schools.
Right.
This, this is in the schools?
What's that?
This is for the schools.
This is in public facilities in school district. That's.
This is for the school sites.
Paragraph.
Yeah. Okay.
So that makes sense.
Okay, that's.
That, that does make sense.
They said, okay, so I, can I ask a question? In, in seventeen point three two, which is the residential districts R one A, there are all these footnotes, eight of them. Uh, number five of which I don't understand, but none of them are referenced. I don't know what footnote goes where.
Employee housing.
So this is, uh, something that we can fix. The footnote is attached to the land use, not the P or the CUP.
The footnote is attached.
So like, for example, it says, single-family dwelling and then the footnote one comma three.
One and three, okay.
Instead of P having the one and the three attached to it.
Oh, I see, I see.
Some built-in inconsistencies with the code.
See, that's number four.
Yeah, I see it now. So my question was, what, what does five mean? Multifamily, that, is this assumed, the sentence starts with multifamily residential?
It says, shall only be permitted on lots with a multifamily overlay district RM ten designation, subject to compliance with the objective design standards in section seventeen point three six, multifamily overlay district RM ten. And we would clean up that reference.
I can read it, but what, what I'm asked, the, the sentence in five, which starts with the word shall, doesn't make sense to me unless you start with multifamily residential shall.
Yeah.
Well, just hang on. If that's accurate, then this multifamily includes footnotes six and seven. But footnote six.
Is pursuant, is.
Is it supposed to say multifamily residential pursuant to? Is that what it's, I, I, I don't know how to read this.
I think the syntax is, uh, taxing his brain. The syntax.
I think it's late.
I mean, that's what I end up having to do with a bunch of this stuff, cause it makes no sense.
So the, the, the footnote modifier
Yeah.
is on multifamily residential. So, so I, I guess in one way to read the table is, is this only applies to foot, to multifamily residential. So you would read that into the footnote, multifamily residential shall only be applied to multifamily residential pursuant to this. That's one way to read it, otherwise you could just incorporate multifamily into the footnote.
Okay.
It feels like we're doing a study session and a, and a meeting with the public and it seems like.
We're in this study session in July.
Okay. And there's no footnote for the single-room occupancy.
For which one?
Single-room occupancy.
Right.
Which is in red. It's the last bullet point.
That's been added per state law.
Oh.
There's no footnote associated with what you pointed.
We can add a footnote.
But what's it mean? I don't.
Uh, single-room occupancy is a type of affordable housing where it's, it's effectively group housing.
So that would be maybe number nine.
Okay.
We can study this more.
And, and if, if I go to the next item, seventeen thirty-three, this is residential district RB one. The chart shows that there's footnotes one through seven, but I only see one through five.
Yeah, and I'm also seeing here that we need to remove the reference to multifamily residential. Cause this is the R one B district and we don't.
So were we moving that one?
You have mobile and manufactured with a footnote eight, but there's no eight.
Yeah.
Unless it's on another page.
Yeah, it is. It's on the previous page. Cause it talks about mobile homes and manufactured housing shall be constructed on a permanent foundation.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. I forgot. We have to go backwards.
They need to be, they, they need to be referenced probably.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome. I know, um, to be, to be truthful, uh, George and Brittany, I have not, uh, reviewed these documents. So I would like to table the review of the, maybe Stacy has, cause I know she's got little post-it notes everywhere.
I've read every page of this thing.
Well, I didn't. So I think that we need to table this discussion so that we have a chance to kind of really cross-reference and understand it a little bit. That's what I'd like to do. Is there another section that you wanna take a look at for us? I'm gonna put a pin in this.
Well, is this not, we looked at in the study session in July, was just some minor modifications. Cause I remember we went through these tables in July and June.
So the, the study session was, I think, in April and that was more focused on text in the housing element.
Okay.
Uh, that addressed needs analysis, population studies.
No, we had these tables with the footnotes on it. We did.
Okay.
But I don't think it was April. It was later, but that's okay.
You have been keeping very good track of what's going forward with the Planning Commission. So it might be that you're thinking too of what, what was discussed at the Planning Commission.
Is there a methodology that would be more efficient for each of us to spend more time and then give you feedback separately without Brown Act violation and then continuous meeting? Cause I feel like we're all pretty tired of whether we're admitting it or not. And we're not doing our best job at this moment, I think. So is there another methodology? Is there one you could propose, George, of how we could collect this from everyone?
Well, we, we had suggested some one-on-one meetings. I know we have a couple that are still to come, subsequent ones. And you can certainly provide feedback to staff on that. And then we could incorporate that feedback into the public meeting or discussion by the council.
Okay.
Uh, some of the feedback that you've, we've included this evening came from some of those one-on-one conversations. We could do that in between as much as we could.
I'm changing my, my vote to go with you and Elizabeth. Let's terminate the meeting.
Well, you finally got tired, there you go.
No, I'm just a little frustrated.
Some have been more engaged than others, so.
He just must have taken.
I, I've got another comment and it.
I don't like going over stuff.
Part of the problem is we haven't exactly been directed about what we really need to review out of 1,700 pages. So it would be helpful, I think that's what Diana was asking. That would be helpful, but one comment I have is, I'm not sure, this is chapter 17.xx. So I'm not sure what that means, but in 17.xx, there's the height issue in 17.xx.3030. And as a subcategory of the height issue, it says, "Vertical sidewalls and columns built at the setback line shall not exceed 30 feet at the front and 21 feet at the side." And I think 30 feet at the front, if I am following what you've done, that's essentially the Roger Reynolds property where the front walls are quite high and the roof slants a relatively small amount. And I don't, I don't think that's a good solution for Atherton. I think that is too high of a front sidewall. So I think that's one of the issues we need to discuss and assess.
Can I make us?
Let me just finish. And on the next page, which is also 17.xx, under height, it says, "The maximum height of the main building shall be 40 feet", which is, I thought it was 34 feet was what we agreed to.
Yeah, we agreed to 34.
And, and then again, it states that the sidewalls at the setback line shall not exceed 30 feet at the front. So that's the same comment I just gave.
Can I stop one second? I don't think that we're all hearing and I really want to hear it. How about we take an approach where we know it's chapter 10? There was said number of chapters that we're going to discuss. Why don't we say we're going to try, and you tell us what those are? We all go back and read and we make a list and we do a rev individually because I know we can't Brown Act. And then we bring it back with a more organized way because I don't think we're all hearing all the details and there's a lot.
Can we somehow put that out in the public so we know which ones you're focusing on?
Yeah, the proposal would be to then, when we lead into our next continuation, not only will we address the ones that were brought up tonight, but all these other ones as well. And that will give us more time to read them all in more detail and give feedback.
It's really the proposed municipal code that's being rewritten.
So, so when, when Steph, I put my pre-agenda email out and a few other things, the focus was the staff report.
Yeah.
Attachment 12, which are the municipal code amendments and the objective design standards.
You did list them, but they were in the sea of stuff and we, I can't say that we've all seen them, so.
In the housing element, you've already gone, gone through that in broad scope, not specifics. The general plan stuff you did this evening. The zoning map will kind of flow from other decisions that you make. So it's really the municipal code changes, the objective design standards and the staff report. Read those three things and then staff can walk through those. That work?
Great.
And then we can make our own list of all of our questions and.
Wait, those three things are the general plan, the AMC amendment and the zoning map amendment, those are 10, 12 and 13?
No, not the general plan stuff, we did that this evening already. The municipal code amendments, which are attachment 12.
Right.
Which also includes the objective design standards.
The objective design standards.
They're part of that attachment 12.
In 12?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's huge.
It's a 17 point XX.
Not that big, it's this big.
It's this whole section.
Okay, got it.
Right.
This whole section here.
And the staff report.
Yeah.
But we also need the revisions to that housing element.
Revisions to the housing element, that's a singular document, if you have questions on that.
You had said that was sections 8 and 9, I only see 9.
That is section, attachment 8.
Maybe 8.
That's attachment 8.
It's attachment 8. So 8, 12, 10?
No, 10, you already did 10.
Okay.
No, 13.
13's the zoning.
13's the zoning map, it'll evolve from whatever you decide in some of those other things.
How about this, can you send us an email, summarize what our assignment is?
Yeah.
I'm trying to do it publicly for your members of the public that asked that question.
Thank you.
So that's the staff report?
Yeah.
So attachment 8, which is the housing element. Attachment 12, which are the municipal code amendments. And in municipal code amendments, that includes the objective design standards.
Can I make a suggestion to the amendment 12? I think pages 1 through 11, maybe we could do that offline because it's, this is mostly state law requirements. So it's not stuff that's really in our control. I think the, the meaty part of the discussion is the seven, chapter 17 point XX, the multifamily overlay district.
Right.
And the setbacks and whatever. So I would propose we start.
For that section.
With this.
So that's page 12.
Ask your questions offline.
Starting page 12.
That is page 12 of attachment 12.
Page 12.
Page.
Did everybody get that?
1,495, page 12.
All right.
Is that 1,495 through the rest of the section?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's all the design standards for all the multifamily, including RM20 and RM40.
And if you haven't done so and you want to do so or want to do so again, schedule time with Brittany and R.I. and we can walk through that with you in between now and October 2nd.
Okay. And then the staff report, the staff report's really well-written.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second it. I'm just coming along, guys.
Thank you, guys.